I call to order the Gladstone City Council meeting for October 13th, 2020 at 6:31 PM. Good evening, everybody. For the Governor's Executive Order 20-16 regarding compliance with Oregon's public meeting laws, the city of Gladstone is abiding by social distancing requirements during the coronavirus pandemic. This city council meeting will be conducted virtually using the Zoom platform. The Zoom access instructions can be found on the meeting agenda. Members of the city council, staff, and the public all have access to this call. Public comment requests were accepted prior to noon today and were to include your topic and phone number. We will be muting everyone except councilors and you will be unmuted when it is your time to speak. Tonight, we will begin with the swearing in of Gladstone Police Officer Shang Soon Lau. Our consent agenda includes approval of the September 8th, 2020 meeting minutes, approval of the August bank balances, budget report for periods ending August 31st, 2020, approval of the August check register, legal costs on projects, department head monthly reports for September 2020, ratification of an intergovernmental agreement, also referred to as an IGA, between Clackamas County and the city of Gladstone to utilize the Gladstone Senior Center as the staging area for the county's food box distribution program, and approval of an OLCC liquor license application for Happy's Bar &amp; Grill LLC. Our regular meeting agenda includes the following public hearings. Public hearing for ordinance 1502, amending the Gladstone Municipal Code, also referred to as a GMC, Chapter 17.06 pertaining to definitions of vacation rental and vacation occupancy. Public hearing for ordinance 1503, amending the Gladstone Municipal Code, again, HDMC, Chapter 17.18 pertaining to parking requirements for the substitution of institutional or civic land uses in the C2 zoning district. Public hearing for ordinance 1504, rezone from OR 7.2 Single Family Residential, which is a 7,200 square foot lot, to MR Multi-Family Residential to allow development of additional parking and recreation for the existing Webster Ridge Apartments located at 18085 Webster Road, Stony Ridge LLC. And public hearing to consider the approval of ordinance 1505, amending the Gladstone Municipal Code, again, the GMC, Chapter 12.12 Park Rules. We have two items in Business Carried Forward, which are the updates on the draft Clackamas County Library Advisory Board of Trustees and a discussion about Halloween. Tammy, could you please call the roll?
Counselor Ripley. I believe he was trying to join. I'll come back. Counselor Neese. We're still admitting a few people, so. Counselor Tracy.
Present.
Counselor Reisner.
He's there, he's just muted.
Here.
Thank you. Counselor Todd. Counselor Todd.
Here.
Counselor Mercero. Mayor Stimple.
Here. And I see Counselor Ripley, it says Tricia Ripley, and he's muted.
Counselor Neese.
Counselor Neese is here.
And Counselor Ripley is here also.
All right. Did I hear Counselor Neese? Okay. Sorry, thank you.
So Counselor Neese is not on?
I do not see her unless she is on by a phone number.
I'm on by phone, my internet is not working.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. So first is our presentation, which is a swearing in of our new Gladstone Police Officer. So Chief Schmerber, take it away.
Hi, good evening, counsel and mayor. How are you? I'd like to introduce you, Shang Jean Lau, also goes by Clement. He was brought on October 5th of this month, this year. And he spent the last two and a half years with Mount Angel Police Department. He is a terrific, I think a terrific hire for the city of Gladstone. And he's going to be a valued, valued member of this Gladstone family. So I want to go ahead and hand it off to our city administrator, Jackie Betts. I know Clement's on, Officer Lau was on Zoom with us now. So city administrator Betts, would you, Jackie, would you like to take it from here?
Thank you, Chief Schmerber. Clement, are you ready?
I am.
All right. Can you raise your right hand and repeat after me? I, Shang Soon Lau.
I, Shang Soon Lau.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Oregon.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Oregon.
And the Charter and Municipal Code of the city of Gladstone.
And the Charter and Municipal Code of the city of Gladstone.
And that I will.
And that I will.
In the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Perform the duties of police officer for the city of Gladstone, Oregon.
Perform the duties of police officer for the city of Gladstone, Oregon.
During my entire term of employment, so help me God.
During my entire term of employment, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Welcome aboard.
So you are on duty right now, working full-time for us, right?
They have me training before I go on the road for a couple of weeks.
They're not going to give you a car right now and just let you go?
No.
Well, do you have any questions for us?
I don't.
Don't? Well, welcome aboard. Thank you, chief.
Thank you. Congratulations, Clement.
Thanks.
Welcome aboard.
All right. Well, next, do we have any agenda additions or corrections?
I have none, mayor, thank you.
All right. Next is the consent agenda. Do we have any discussion? I'm going to actually call the councilors individually, that seems to work out the best. So Counselor Mercero, do you have any questions?
I do have a question. We pulled a couple of items from last month's consent agenda, does get worked back in? I'm out of the loop on that.
Counselor Tracy, they were pulled and answered and then approved that night.
Okay, so we went back and approved with those items in there?
Correct.
Thank you for the refreshment.
All right, Counselor Mercero, any questions or concerns?
No questions, thank you.
Counselor Todd?
No questions, no concerns, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Reisner?
No questions or concerns, thank you.
Counselor Tracy?
None, thank you.
Counselor Ripley?
I have no questions.
And Counselor Neese?
No, I have no questions, thank you.
All right, would someone like to make a motion then?
So move for the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion was made by Counselor Tracy and seconded by Counselor Todd to accept the consent agenda. Any further discussion? None. Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Counselor Neese?
Yes.
Counselor Tracy?
Aye.
Counselor Reisner?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Mercero?
Yes.
Mayor Stimple?
Yes. Consent agenda is approved. Next is correspondence.
Thank you, mayor and council. I do have two items to be entered tonight. One of them is from Libby Wentz that sent an email asking that since she's unable to attend the meeting, she's wanting to address the results of the ethic complaint she made last year ever since Tammy Stimple said her complaint was unfounded. She said her complaint was not unfounded. The committee did find there was sufficient information to recommend that Tammy Stimple committed two violations of ORS 244 1202. If one reads the report, Stimple admits her violations and uses as an excuse that the city attorney would have stopped her if she should not have voted, which is not true according to this report and not a valid excuse for voting to benefit her family financially. I sent a copy of this email to the city council today along with the report. We are going to post this on the city's website under additional correspondence. The mayor has also provided a response that says, "In response to Libby Wentz's email below, she is correct. The preliminary investigator presented their information to the commission and the commission voted unanimously to dismiss the charges." I have attached the meeting minutes from the Oregon Government Ethics Commission for the April 19, 2019 meeting to confirm this. My case is on page five and has been highlighted. Ms. Wentz is very aware of this. So the mayor's comments and the minutes to that meeting will also be posted on the agenda. The second item we have tonight is a statement that Counselor Neese asked that I forward to the city council and she would like to read it into the record.
All right. Normally, we don't do, but go ahead, Linda. Counselor Neese.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Stimple, and thank you, city administrator Betts. To my fellow councilors, the mayor, and the citizens of Gladstone, it's difficult for me to stand before you today to defend myself yet again against another unlearned attack by a five-time failed candidate. Little more than two years ago, I stood before this council in response to another attack by a career professional. I nearly resigned my seat to avoid the continued harassment, but after the earlier matter was resolved and the Secretary of State ruled against his accusations against me, I falsely assumed we had moved past these political motivated attacks. Apparently, I underestimated him, his desperation to finally win a seat on the council by my means necessary, including attempting to force me out of my seat, which my term ends December 31st. Filing complaints and recalls against city councilors has become something of a professionalism who describes his occupation as a consultant despite having no business registration with the Oregon Secretary of State. The mayor, who recently endorsed him less than a year ago, attacked him in the Clackamas Review after he filed ethics charges against her for what he deemed a violation of public meeting laws. After he was denied access to an executive session claiming press credentials obtained online and a blog about his activities qualified him as a professional journalist. The mayor mocked him, mocked his complaints by claiming she suddenly became a professional journalist by getting the same press credentials that any citizen is able to download instantly through a website. I went and, she said that I went and took three seconds to get a press pass. I'm also a minister and I have zero credentials. And I'm an FBI agent. According to the 2016 memo issued by Oregon Attorney General Ellen Rosenblum, "Media allowed to attend executive sessions must belong to an entity that is formally organized for the purpose of gathering and disseminating news that decisions went against and here we are again going after me." I want to apologize to the council for not responding sooner regarding his latest complaints against me. I found out about the Secretary of State's charges while you received your copy. The signature gathering in question took place in September of 2019 and I understood it to be resolved. I was surprised to find the complaint was still active or has been reactivated. I have now filed a formal appeal. I just received notice with the appeal except for November the 6th. As the matter, as this matter has not been resolved with the Secretary of State and given his decisive attacks on me and other members of the council, Counselor Todd and Counselor Tracy, I respectfully request that the council give me patience till this issue is resolved. Thank you.
All right. Since this isn't the normal way of doing things, I would have thought maybe that might have been more appropriate during business from the council, but it's under correspondence. So there's a lot of things that are being said in there. Does anybody have any comments or questions, concerns? I believe we had somebody that submitted that they wanted to speak if this issue was brought up. Tammy?
That was Bill Osborne.
All right. So since he put in a request to speak, we need to let him speak.
Am I good to talk now?
Yeah.
All right. I want to address some of the claims Counselor Neese has leveled against me as she tries to deflect her guilt of violating the law again. First, the ethics complaint I made was against the entire council, not just one member. The report from the investigator states she believed there were numerous issues, but the appointed board still decided to drop the investigation and charges. This also happened in 2019.
Mayor, can I make a request here? There's a conflict of different ethics. There's a conflict of the different ethics violations. Mr. Osborne speaking on the ethics violation regarding his inability to enter the executive session. Linda Neese is addressing another ethics violation that is completely unrelated to that one. So if he's going to address what she said, if he's going to retort to what she said.
That was exactly what she was talking about.
Yeah, but you don't need to bring up this other ethics violation. So please just do the point.
That's what Counselor Neese brought up. So I'm just bringing up what Counselor Neese brought up. First, the ethics complaint I made was against the entire council, not just one member. The report from the investigator said they believed there were numerous issues, but the appointed board still decided to drop the investigation and charges. This also happened in 2019. It included Counselor Ripley. The law violation against Linda Neese happened before Counselor Ripley was elected and in fact had to do with the petition to put him on the 2018 ballot. This is not any accusation against Counselor Ripley. I don't believe he had any idea of the wrongdoing that happened. Mistaken dates are nothing new to Counselor Neese. She twice registered under false birthdates. The investigation closed and concluded that she had lied twice about her birthday and broken numerous laws, but the statute of limitations had expired, so she was not charged. Counselor Neese then sat on the dais and claimed she was found not guilty. That was a lie. Counselor Neese claimed.
Are you just about done, though?
Just about, yeah.
Thank you.
I'm just trying to get through her. Counselor Neese claimed that she found out about this investigation. However, she'd been in contact with the attorney general on the criminal charge side and the secretary had stayed on the civil penalty for two years. She's also received a finding of guilt and the proposed fine. It's the fine that she's appealing, not the guilty finding. You know, I would say that, I guess, you know, if I'm wrong for reporting law violations from my elected officials, then I guess I'm wrong. But we expect all of you to set a good example for the rest of us to follow. And the fact that Counselor Neese can't seem to do that and then wants to point guilt or try to attack other people's character, people who she's taken a note to serve, I think is just wrong. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. And Counselor Tracy, she did mention the ethics violation. So I was actually going to comment on that as well, that the ethics violation was not just towards me, it was towards the entire council. And so I'm not quite sure what benefit it would be for her to just call out me as being the recipient of that ethics complaint. Also.
What do you do with this ethics complaint, though?
No, it doesn't, but she did mention it in her. She did mention it in her statement. So absolutely, I wanted that clarified as well. And then also, Bill Osborne is running against Linda Neese's son for a city council seat. So that also probably should have been divulged. All right. Is that it? All right. A couple of things before we start. First, for those folks that would like to speak, the deadline to accept comments was noon today. As a reminder, we allow three minutes for public comment unless there are special circumstances and the additional time has been approved by staff beforehand. Second, as I do before every meeting, I would like to say a few words regarding the city council. The most important limitation we have sitting here is that we are representing the citizens of Gladstone, not our own personal agendas and beliefs. There have been many times when a decision being made doesn't align with what we would like personally, but have made a decision based on what is best for the city as a whole. That doesn't mean our personal beliefs have changed, just that the city's needs were more important. As we discuss and consider matters, there are laws and rules we have to use as the basis for our decisions. They start at the federal and state level, then they filter down to our city's comprehensive plan, city charter, codes, and ordinances. We do not have the luxury of randomly making decisions, but instead have to be consistent and take a path that is defensible. We appreciate you taking the time to call in and participate in this process. I believe we will have your phones muted until it is time to speak. If we are not able to mute your phone, please do so on your end. My goal is to keep this meeting respectful and engaging, and I hope you can all help me do this. So before we get into the regular agenda, because this is public hearings, we have a new script for remote public hearings. So I need you all to kind of sort of bear with me because the script I got was for a quasi-judicial discussion when actually it's legislative, so it's a little bit different. What I'm going to do, because all four of the items on our regular agenda, actually four, one, two, three, four items on our regular agenda are all public hearings, I'm going to kind of go over the basics first and then we'll break it down for each of the agenda items. So first is that public testimony is going to be broken down into testimony in favor, testimony in opposed, and neutral testimony. And so what I'll do is I will call it first. Everybody that's in favor, raise your hands. And on Zoom, you have a little button where you can raise your hands. That way Tammy knows that everybody that's on right then wants to be in favor. And then I'll ask in opposition, and then I'll ask in neutral. So make sure that you don't raise your hand when it's not your time because this is a new process and I want to make it as easy as possible. If you're on the phone and you can't raise your hand, I guess the number nine, if you do star nine, that's supposed to equal raising your hand. So if you testify, you must raise all issues you wish to address at this hearing. And if your issue is not raised at this hearing, it cannot be raised later in any appeal. Your comments should state why the application should or should not be approved or include your proposed modifications you believe are necessary for approval according to the standards. Because this is the initial evidentiary hearing, state law grants any party the right to request a continuance of this hearing or ask that the record remain open after the hearing is closed. If you do not raise specific issues at the final evidentiary hearing or by close of the record or fail to provide statements or evidence to allow the local government or its designate to respond to the issue, you will not be able to appeal the decision to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that particular issue. I don't think these are all luba, but, okay. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government or its designate to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. And the guidelines for public testimony are, please try to avoid repetition. If someone else has already expressed the same thoughts, it is acceptable to state that you agree with the statements of a previous speaker, even if that is all you say. If you have documents, maps, or letters that you wish to have considered by the body, they must formally be placed in the record of this proceeding. And to do that, you needed to have sent your materials to tammybannick@ci.gladstone.or.us and staff will make sure your evidence is properly taken care of. If you do not wish to speak but do still want to submit written testimony, you may also email these materials to bannick@ci.gladstone.or.us. I think that is the bulk of it. Jackie, was there anything else there that you think I needed to raise?
No, I think you did a good job.
All right. Brings me back to the Planning Commission days. And Michael Miltz is probably going, oh, cringe, even though I did say specificity correctly and I couldn't do that in four years. So, all right. First item on our regular agenda is 9A, which is public hearing for ordinance 1502, amending the Gladstone Municipal Code, also referred to as the GMC, Chapter 17.06 pertaining to definitions of vacation rental and vacation occupancy. I opened the public hearing at 6:56 PM. So I need to call for any abstentions from the hearing body. Is there any council member that would like to abstain from this?
Mayor, I would just give an abundance of caution to note that I do have a potential conflict of interest to having a property that might fall under this.
Okay. So nobody wants to abstain yet, but we do have a potential conflict of interest. Jackie, would you like to address that conflict? Or do we have an attorney on the line?
Chad is on the line. And I think that as long as Tracy has declared a potential, it is out of abundance of caution. It won't restrict her ability to vote on this item. She just wanted to make sure that people understood that she does have a property in town that falls under this definition that you're approving tonight.
Chad?
Couldn't have said it better.
Okay. So Cherry Houston is actually Chad for all of this.
Yeah, that's our office administrator. Sorry, I forgot to sign out of her account and into my account.
Okay. So that's why I'm confused. All right. So that is Chad. All right. So we're good to go? As far as Counselor Todd goes?
Yes, you are.
Okay. Does anyone have any ex parte contact on any properties that would fall under this chapter? I don't see anybody waving their hands, so I'm going to assume that's a no. And the people that are on this call can challenge any of these councilors, anybody that is making decisions on this item. And if you wish to challenge us at this time, please raise your hand or, I mean, do your raise your hand button or dial star nine to raise your hand if you're on the phone. Do we have any challenges? Nope. All right. Chad, did I cover everything so far?
Sounds great so far.
Okay, good. All right. So first is, we're going to start with staff. Staff recap.
Hello.
Hello, Joy.
Tammy has enabled me to share my screen. You all received the PowerPoint presentation in your packets tonight. I noticed when I reviewed the agenda that instead of being item number three, as indicated in your packets, this proposed code amendments text 2020-02 was agenda item nine. So the nine on the screen is the only change between what was in your packets and what I will be sharing tonight. In your packets, there was a staff report that included two proposed amendments. One was to Section 17.06, which is the potential of adding a definition of vacation rental and of vacation occupancy. And one was to Section 17.18.070, which is the off-street parking standards for the C2 community, or C2 commercial district. Both of these proposed amendments had public hearings held by the Gladstone Planning Commission in July. And Section 17.18.070 had a continuance of the public hearing that continued into the August meeting. had a continuance of the public hearing that continued into the August meeting. A little bit of background, back in March, City Council approved an ordinance, Ordinance 1499 that addressed off-street parking and owner occupancy of accessory dwelling units to be in compliance with House Bill 2001. And House Bill 2001 allowed local jurisdictions to require off-street parking and owner occupancy if it was used as a vacation or vacation occupancy. And so in March, the language that you see in this, on the screen was added to the Gladstone Municipal Code. It was brought to staff's attention that vacation rental was not defined in the Gladstone Municipal Code. And so the Planning Commission considered a definition that relies on the ORS 91.100, which defines vacation occupancy. Because that is how House Bill 2001 determines how local jurisdictions can require parking or owner occupancy. The proposed definition that is recommended by the Planning Commission to, for you to consider tonight, is a vacation rental means a dwelling unit or accessory dwelling unit providing vacation occupancy. Currently, the Gladstone Municipal Code includes definitions for both accessory dwelling unit and dwelling unit. As I mentioned, vacation occupancy is defined in ORS 91.100. And the Planning Commission is recommending adding the definition of vacation occupancy referencing ORS 91.100, but defining it as it is defined currently in Oregon Revised Statutes. Therefore, vacation rental and vacation occupancy are being proposed as additions to Section 17.06. Section 17.18.070 is coming before you because Plaquemines County is in the initial stages of designing a new library for the city. And it is planned for the location of the previous Gladstone City Hall. The property is Zone C2 and is subject to Section 17.18 of the Gladstone Municipal Code. The existing code, the current code, generally allows new commercial uses to be substituted for old commercial uses without providing any additional off-street parking if the building is not expanded by more than 10% of the floor area used for commercial use on January 1, 1980. However, it does not clearly identify whether a community service facility such as a library or a civic use such as a city hall could use that same section of the code to allow for, to allow the redevelopment of a property without providing additional off-street parking. Therefore, City Council supported the Planning Commission in considering text amendments related to this. As Planning Commission noted, and as you know from the Gladstone zoning map, the C2 zoning district is primarily along Portland Avenue, but there are other areas over by McLaughlin that are Zone C2. And the proposed amendments would apply to all of the C2 zoning district in Gladstone unless the City Council chose to just have it applied to one section. The Gladstone Downtown Revitalization Plan was adopted by City Council in 2018. And it serves as a reference for any proposed amendments to the Comprehensive Plan or the zoning map that affects the downtown area. Therefore, as we are talking about parking and the redevelopment of community service facilities or civic uses in the C2 zoning district, it's important to remember that there is guidance in the Downtown Revitalization about parking. The Section 17.18.070 has a small modification in item number one to clearly identify that where one commercial use allowed outright is substituted for another commercial use in an existing building and the building is not expanded by more than 10% of the floor area, no more off-street parking shall be required. The addition of commercial use was to clarify the intent to make sure that people understood that it would be the substitution of one commercial use with another commercial use. The Planning Commission reviewed the current language and reviewed language proposed by staff, including the city attorney. And they came up with this proposed change. If a community service facility allowed outright is substituted for another community service facility on the same property, whether in the same building or a new building, and the total lot coverage is not expanded by more than 10% of the lot coverage of the prior buildings on the property, no more off-street parking shall be required than was proposed or that then was possessed by the previous facility or use. Lot coverage is defined in the existing Gladstone Municipal Code as the area covered by a building or buildings on a lot expressed as a percentage of the total lot area. This would include bathrooms if it is a park. This would include the garage that holds the fire trucks. This would include buildings, such as the previous city hall. So lot coverage would include any buildings on a lot. The library that is planned for the old city hall site is an example of a community service facility that is being redeveloped. You can see from the picture here that the old city hall had a little bit of landscaping next to the sidewalk, but it almost covered the entire lot. And the lot is 9,147.6 square feet. The proposed library has three different designs that are being considered and are receiving feedback from the City of Gladstone residents. And all of those designs have a limit of 6,000 square feet. Therefore, the new building will be smaller than the previous building. Adding a section to 17.18.070 changes the numbering. And that is the only thing that is being proposed for item number three, which is currently the existing item number two. As we look at changes to the Comprehensive Plan or to the zoning map, it's important to keep in mind whether it is consistent with the Gladstone Comprehensive Plan and the statewide planning goals. And the facilities and services goal in the Gladstone Comprehensive Plan has a section that specifically addresses the need of concentrating library facilities and services in the existing central location and to continue to coordinate library services with Plaquemines County. That is different than the statewide planning goals, which has a public facilities and services section in Goal Number 11, but it is concentrated on water and sewer and does not mention libraries. However, citizen involvement for this proposed change is fulfilled through the public hearings held by the Planning Commission and the City Council. And it meets the goal for transportation for supporting alternative transportation and supporting the current roads that are in Gladstone. The Gladstone Planning Commission are recommending approval of the following text changes. If a community service facility allowed outright is substituted for another community service facility on the same property, whether on the same building or a new building or buildings, the total lot coverage is not expanded by more than 10% of the lot coverage of the prior buildings on the property, no more off-street parking shall be required than was possessed by the previous facility or use. Staff recommends that the City Council make the following motion that adds the words civic uses to the proposed text change as described in the staff report to clarify that the city hall is also a potential community service facility or a civic use that could be substituted for another civic use or community service facility without the addition of additional parking. With that, I end my staff presentation. Mayor, you're muted.
I have a question for Jackie or Chad. Do we need, we need to vote on and discuss 1502 and 1503 separately, even though the staff is recommending a single motion? Is that correct? Or can we do it as?
I'm sorry, yes, that's correct. You should vote on them separately. You can discuss them together if you want as part of this public hearing, but you should vote on them separately.
I, for comfort and for clarity, I think we need to do them separately, if that's all right with everybody. And so then the staff motion is going to be different than what the recommendation is here. So first, I'm going to call, so nobody has their hands raised yet. Anybody that would like to testify in favor of this, of Ordinance 1502? Could you raise your hand now and let Tammy Bannick know so we can call you forward? Is there, there's a Hans down there with the hand up? I don't know if that means that that's, would like to speak? Tammy, do you see the, I don't, it just is Hans.
I do not see that, but I think he is here on a different item.
Oh, okay, so the hands up does not necessarily mean you want to speak on this one? Hans?
And he is unmuted if he needs to be.
Yeah, sorry, I got a new computer tonight, trying to figure it out.
Okay, so you don't want to speak in favor on this one?
No, sorry.
Okay, thank you. Anyone against Ordinance 1502 staff's recommendation? I don't see any hands up. Is that correct, Tammy?
I do not see any either, Mayor.
Okay, then do we have any neutral testimony on Ordinance 1502? I don't see anything. I should have probably asked for rebuttal. Do we have any rebuttal? I don't see anything. All right. I would call for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it. Counselor Neese.
Motion was made by Counselor Tracy and seconded by Counselor Neese to close the public hearing for Ordinance 1502. Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
And this is for closing the public hearing?
Yes, closing the public hearing.
Yes.
Counselor Tracy?
Hi.
Counselor Reisner?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Mercero?
Yes.
Mayor Stimple?
Yes, public hearing is closed for Ordinance 1502 at 7:17 PM on October 13, 2020. Do we have any discussion? Counselor Mercero, questions or concerns?
No questions or concerns.
Counselor Todd?
No, no questions or concerns.
Counselor Reisner?
No.
Counselor Tracy?
Not at this time.
Counselor Ripley?
No questions.
Counselor Neese? Counselor Neese?
I'm sorry, I had, I was muted. And I have a question when they were talking, and I may have missed it, on the parking spots. How many, how many parking spots do they think that they will get on that lot? Clarify it for me.
The library lot, is that what you're talking?
Yes, yes.
The library. That is the next item, is it not? Yeah, we're going to talk about that next, Linda. We're talking about the vacation rental, vacation occupancy.
I, all right, I'm okay with that.
Okay. No further discussion. Would someone like to make a motion then, please?
Mayor, can I interrupt real quick?
Yes, Chad, I probably missed something.
No, you did not, but there's actually a typo in Ordinance 1502. We cite ORS 91.100 when it should be 90.100. So whomever would make a motion, you would want to amend the ordinance to correct that typographical error.
Okay, so it should be ORS 90.100?
Correct.
Okay. All right, would someone like to make a motion then, please? I see furrowed brows. Somebody up there's got to want, got to make a motion.
I'll take a stab at it.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Reisner.
Slice up what's on 9-3. I make a motion to approve Ordinance 1502 and ordinance amending Chapter 1706 of the Gladstone Municipal Code by adding definitions regarding vacation rentals and vacation occupancy to the Gladstone Municipal Code with the correction in 17.06.553 of the ORS. It's 90.100.
Awesome.
Did I cover everything?
Did we, did that hit everything, Chad?
Perfect.
All right, would someone like to second that?
Counselor Neese, I'll second it.
Thank you. Motion was made by Counselor Reisner and seconded by Counselor Neese to approve Ordinance 1502 amending the Gladstone Municipal Code, GMC, Chapter 17.06 pertaining to definitions of vacation rental and vacation occupancy. Any further discussion? Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Ripley?
Um, yes.
Counselor Neese?
Yes.
Counselor Tracy?
Hi.
Counselor Reisner?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Mercero?
Yes.
Mayor Stimple?
Yes. So it was unanimous? So we don't need to do a second? I mean, we don't need to hold it over till the next meeting, but we can do our second reading right now? Is that correct, Chad?
Correct, Mayor.
Okay. Counselor Reisner, you want to take another shot at it? Because you did such a good job.
So I make a motion to approve Ordinance 1502 and ordinance amending Chapter 17.06 of the Gladstone Municipal Code by adding definitions regarding vacation rentals and vacation occupancy to the Gladstone Municipal Code with the correction of 17.06.553 vacation occupancy as defined by ORS 90100.
All right. Do I have a second?
My God, what's wrong with the voice?
Who, who was that? Counselor Neese?
I think it was Counselor Tracy, but.
Counselor Tracy. Counsel, are you seconding it, Counselor Tracy?
I did second, but, but two of us did at the same time.
Okay. It just was mumbled. Okay. Motion was made by Counselor Reisner and seconded by Counselor Tracy for the second reading to approve Ordinance 1502 amending the Gladstone Municipal Code, GMC, Chapter 17.06 pertaining to definitions of vacation rental and vacation occupancy with the amendment of ORS 90.100. Any further discussion? Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Ripley? Counselor?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Neese?
Yes.
Counselor Tracy?
Hi.
Counselor Reisner?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Mercero?
Yes.
Mayor Stimple?
Yes. Motion was passed at 7:24 PM. Um, for those of you that aren't familiar with Planning Commission, this is how Planning Commission works, right? Michael's going, oh, yeah. Seems a little redundant, but it's very formal and please bear with us. Okay, so the, the next item is 9B Public Hearing for Ordinance 1503 amending the Gladstone Municipal Code, the GMC, Chapter 17.18 pertaining to parking requirements for the substitution the institutional or civic land uses in the C2 zoning district. Joy already did the staff report. Is there anything that you would like to add for this item?
There was a counselor who asked regarding how much parking the, the library is proposing for that site due to the size of the site and the loading requirements that require a loading dock. There is insufficient space to have parking on the property unless it is a garage, a parking garage underneath the library. And so the plans I have seen have not included off-street parking on the parcel. I.
Can people mute their phone, their phones or their computers, please? Thank you. Go ahead, Joy. I'm sorry.
It has been a couple of months since I have reviewed the latest designs, but that is what I recall.
All right. Counselor Neese, does that answer your question? Counselor Neese?
I think she's having trouble with her phone.
Okay. Well, we'll come back then. All right. Are there any rebuttals? Do you have any, any rebuttals queued, Tammy?
I have nothing.
All right. So first would be testimonies in favor of this proposal. At this point, could you please raise your hands or dial the star nine so we know you wish to speak? I see there's Michael Milch and Angela Riley has a hand up too, so I'm not sure if both of them would like to speak or not. And Vanessa has her, has a hand waving as well. Um, Michael Milch?
Uh, I'm just here as chairman of the Planning Commission to provide any additional information or answer any questions, but I wanted to make two points. One is the staff has very wisely added the, the, the three words and/or civic use to the, to the language that we approved at the Planning Commission meeting. And I think that adds clarity to it. I think if we'd had the foresight to think to add those words ourselves, it probably would have been approved. So among the various options that staff is giving you, is giving you, I would go along with that one, which is the main one that's being recommended. The other thing, the other issue related to, to parking that was an important piece of testimony in the hearing on this was we're talking about replacing the old City Hall with a new library. And I was interested in the impact of the construction of the new City Hall on parking in the downtown area in general. So back before our hearing, I went to Jackie Betts and I asked her how many people generally were working in the City Hall Police Station Building before? And where did they park? And she told me that generally there were 18 people plus four part-time people, including the judge and court security, working in that building. She thought that about maybe two of the 18 parked their personal vehicles down near the Public Works Department, but the other 16 parked their vehicles near, on, on-street parking in the downtown area. That doesn't include the people who are there with business at City Hall or coming to court. Now, the new City Hall building that was built has 36 off-street parking sites, three handicap spots, four carpool spots, and 29 regular spots plus 10 off-street sites. So it was important, I think, when the Planning Commission considered this to realize that we have made a huge net gain in available on-street parking in the downtown area as a result of the construction of, and the, and the moving of the City Hall. So I just wanted to get those pieces of testimony in if it would help influence your decision.
Thank you. Um, I don't see any other hands up. Tammy, do you have anything on this one?
I do not.
Okay. Um, is there any testimony in opposition? Now's the time to raise your hand or dial star nine. I don't see anything. Tammy, do you have anything?
I have nothing.
Um, and now neutral testimony. I don't see any hands up for neutral testimony either. All right. So I'm, I call for a motion to close the public hearing then. Oh, Joy, I'm sorry.
Prior to Chair Milch's sharing of that, I, did you mention that Vanessa had her hand up?
But now there's no hands up. So I think it was, I think it was just one spot automatically had a hand up and it's gone now.
To make sure that, that she had an opportunity if one was needed.
Yeah, I don't see any hands up now. All right. Um, so call for a motion to close the public hearing.
I move that we close the public hearing.
One second. A motion was made by Counselor Reisner and seconded by Counselor Todd to close the hearing for Ordinance 1503. Any further discussion? Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Ripley?
Uh, yes.
Counselor Neese?
Yes.
Counselor Tracy?
Hi.
Did we not make the motion yet? We were talking about discussion.
Counselor Reisner?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Mercero?
Yes.
Mayor Stimple?
Yes. Public hearing is closed at 7:31 PM for Ordinance 1503 amending Gladstone Municipal Code, GMC, Chapter 17.18 pertaining to parking requirements for the substitution of institutional or civic land uses in the C2 zoning district. Any discussion? Counselor Mercero?
No.
Sorry, I pick on you first, but you're the first one up there. That's why I'm doing it. Counselor Todd?
No, thank you.
Counselor Reisner?
No.
Counselor Tracy?
No, but I would like to thank Michael Milch for bringing that to our attention, the deficit of the parking. And then basically that deficit leaves us with less burden on that street. So thank you, Michael, for bringing that to our attention.
Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Yes. You have questions, concerns?
No, but I'm gonna say, I don't have my glasses on. I've been trying to stare at the screen and and I keep getting an echo. So some of my answers aren't quite appropriate. It's because there's an echo in my ear.
Your answers have been appropriate. It's been fine. We don't hear the echo on our end. Counselor Neese?
Yes.
Any questions or concerns?
No, she, she answered my questions and with what Michael Milch said, so I'm satisfied. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. All right. Then I would entertain a motion to approve Ordinance 1503. I know you're queuing up there, Counselor Reisner.
I'll give it a try again. I make a motion to approve Ordinance 1503 amending the Gladstone Municipal Code subsection 17.18.070 as recommended by the Planning Commission with the addition of the words or civic uses as described in the staff report and ordinance amending Chapter 17.18.070 of the Gladstone Municipal Code pertaining to parking requirements for the sub substitution of institutional or civic land uses in the C2 zoning district.
Do I have a second?
One second.
Motion was made by Counselor Reisner and seconded by Counselor Todd. Any further discussion? I don't see any. Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Counselor Neese?
Yes.
Counselor Tracy?
Hi.
Counselor Reisner?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Mercero?
Yes.
Mayor Stimple?
Yes. So it was unanimous? So we can move forward with a second reading now? Staff, do you have any further comments? No. Do we have any comments at all? In favor, opposed, or neutral? All right. Then we need, I need another motion to close. Well, do I, I need to do the open the public hearing or just do a second reading, Chad?
Just a second reading, Mayor.
Yeah, just a second. I'm reading through my script thinking that I missed something. All right. Um, I entertain a motion to approve Ordinance 1503.
I hope for a second reading. I make a motion to approve Ordinance 1503 amending the Gladstone Code subsection 17.18.070 as recommended by the Planning Commission with the addition of the words or civic uses as described in the staff report. And ordinance amending Chapter 17.18.070 of the Gladstone Municipal Code pertaining to parking requirements for the substitution of institutional or civic land uses in the C2 zoning district.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Counselor Reisner, seconded by Counselor Tracy. Do we have any further discussion? I don't see any hands. Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Counselor Neese?
Yes.
Counselor Tracy?
Hi.
Counselor Reisner?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Mercero?
Yes.
Mayor Stimple?
Yes. Um, second reading for Ordinance 1503 amending the Gladstone Municipal Code, GMC, Chapter 17.18 pertaining to parking requirements for the substitution of institutional or civic land uses in the C2 zoning district was approved at 7:37 PM, October 13th, 2020. All right. We only have two more to go, folks. Next one is number 10, Public Hearing for Ordinance 1504 rezone from an R7.2, which is a single-family residential lot of 7,200 square feet, to MR multi-family residential to allow the development of additional parking and recreation for the existing Webster Ridge Apartments at 18085 Webster Road by Stony Ridge LLC. All right, we have staff report.
Good evening. Again, it is still evening. In front of you is the PowerPoint that shows an excerpt of the current zoning map with Webster Road and Oatfield intersection at the bottom and the subject property up near the top with the black arrow pointing to the section of the parcel that is currently zoned R7.2. That is important because the entire parcel that is owned by the church is split-zoned. There are 2.12 acres of land zoned R7.2 and 0.85 acres zoned MR or multifamily residential. There are no known environmental overlays on that property. And the applicant is of Z0149-20 is proposing to only rezone 1.04 acres of the parcel. That would leave an area that retains the R7.2 zoning designation. With the Gladstone Municipal Code, it sets out how Planning Commission and City Council reviews the changes to the Gladstone Municipal Code. And it outlines how you can apply conditions that go with the land that are, are designed to limit any conflict between adjoining property owners, to limit access on thoroughfares through residential areas, to provide additional right-of-way, or to provide public access to green space. And it, it clearly says that there shall be no variance to the ordinance standards in connection with the adoption of a zoning amendment unless it is found by the Planning Commission that the development proposed and covered by a specific limiting condition will provide benefits and safeguards equal to or better than those possible under a strict interpretation of the zoning ordinance. Therefore, the Planning Commission rev. Therefore, the Planning Commission reviewed the land use application and discussed the three special conditions that you see in front of you. One, special condition one, is the future use of the 1.04 acres that are being proposed to be rezoned, and that special condition would limit, or it is stated thus, the 1.04 acres that are to be rezoned shall be developed expressly with land uses customarily considered accessory to multifamily residences per 17.14.030, in addition to recreational uses per 17.68.040. Special condition two is designed to ensure that the Gladstone Municipal, or the requirements of the Gladstone Public Works are met, but extra light is not going beyond the property boundaries and impacting adjoining property owners. Therefore, special condition two would be that the future development of the site shall provide limited lighting per 17.44.020, and any lighting installed shall be the minimum amount required to meet the city of Gladstone Public Works requirements. Additionally, the project currently has a retaining wall at the northwestern edge of the property closest to Stone Oaks Court. However, comments provided to the Planning Commission prior to the public hearing indicated that the screening was not sufficient for the existing apartments, and there was concern about screening for the rezoned parcel. Therefore, the Planning Commission recommended that a six-foot landscaping screen be installed between the retaining wall and the apartments if the integrity of the retaining wall can be maintained. If the vegetation jeopardizes the stability of the retaining wall, then an exception to the current limitation of a combined fence and wall height of six feet would be allowed to ensure that a six-foot fence could be placed on top of the existing retaining wall to screen the adjacent neighbors from the multifamily residential development. Gladstone Municipal Code also sets out the evidence that an applicant must provide to help you determine if the rezoning is needed, if it fulfills a public need, and the greater the departure from the present development policies or land use patterns, the greater the burden of the applicant. The application proposed to eventually increase the availability of recreation and open space to Webster Ridge residents, and by extension, increase the health and well-being of the city's residents by providing additional recreational area to the residents of the apartment buildings and Gladstone residence. They provided evidence that the buildable land inventory and the preliminary housing needs analysis that was completed by Eco Northwest in September of 2019, so this showed the subject property as partially vacant in the buildable lands inventory. I know that you all have had a presentation by Eco Northwest on the draft housing needs analysis that is an extension of the September 2019 housing needs analysis that was done for the region and included a baseline for Gladstone, and you all received a presentation regarding the update. When the applicant provided their evidence back in April, they did not have the draft housing needs analysis that you all have benefited from hearing about. However, they were able to see the September 2019 report. Ultimately, the housing needs analysis report calculated the high-density residential designation as having a deficit of 80 dwelling units in Gladstone. The proposed special condition of limiting future use to accessory uses will mean that rezoning this land to high-density residential will not increase the number of dwelling units. However, it will facilitate the renting of dwelling units that the management company currently keeps vacant due to parking issues. The applicant provided evidence that the public need is best carried out by granting the petition for the proposed action, and that need is best served by granting the petition at this time. That's an important distinction. Is it needed at this time? Does it fulfill a public need today by granting this? The Webster Ridge Apartment Complex is currently not fully occupied. The property manager and move-out interviews indicated that one of the issues is parking, and that due to the lack of parking, not all of the apartments are rented. Each apartment is assigned one parking space, and when the apartments were originally approved in 2018, they were approved with 1.5 parking spaces per unit. For the 122 dwelling units, that equates to 183 parking spaces. Looking at the number of vehicles and the number of apartments, the applicant provided that the resident demand was 1.46 units per unit, or parking spaces per unit. The qualitative data from the property manager and the previous residents indicate a need for additional parking. It is unclear from just looking at the survey of vacant apartments whether that will immediately fill all the vacant apartments, but it will allow the property manager to open up the possibility of having all of the units rented. The application increases housing capacity by rezoning land to multifamily residential. As conditioned, this rezoned property will not increase the number of dwelling units that are built in Gladstone by limiting it to just accessory uses and recreational uses. The applicant had to provide proof of whether it would be a significant change in the neighborhood or the community, or if it was needed due to a mistake in the planning or zoning map. The neighborhood around the proposed rezoning is currently a mix of single-family residential, multifamily residential, church, and open space. The applicant did not contend that there was a mistake in the zoning of the property that needed to be fixed with this amendment. The rezoning and subsequent land use applications that would have to follow would allow the applicant to update the existing apartment complex and meet the need that the property management and owners have identified, the need for more parking. The property is adjacent to the Webster Ridge Apartments, as you can see on the screen here. It is currently vacant. Water and sewer is available for extension, so there is water and sewer available to address fire for the parking garages that the applicant would like to build in the future on the rezoned land. To build the parking garages or parking will require additional land use applications. And at that time, the facilities, public facilities, would be addressed through those additional land use applications. As with all design review applications, we work with the Public Works Department to ensure that it is safe for the proposed use and is fully served by public facilities. One of the facilities that could be impacted by increasing density of land is the transportation system. However, back in 2015, the Webster Ridge Apartments, when they were originally reviewed and approved, found that the transportation system was sufficient for the 122 dwelling units. And as conditioned, this rezoning does not include any additional dwelling unit. Therefore, the applicant provided evidence from an expert, Ms. Hajar, that the existing transportation facility could withstand the addition of the accessory use if the property was rezoned and conditioned as proposed by the Planning Commission. Staff found that the application was consistent with the statewide planning goals and guidelines. And as I mentioned, any future development would require a partition application and a design review application prior to construction. However, the applicant did provide a plan for what they would like to do, and you see it on the screen here. It includes parking garages around covered parking spaces and to the west, a recreation area. The Gladstone Planning Commission is recommending approval of the proposed project with three special conditions. I have read these already, but I will leave these up here for you to read if you so desire.
All right, does council have any questions? For Joy? And I believe we have the applicant on the call also, is that correct?
Yes, that's Michael Robinson.
Michael Robinson. Michael, would you like to add anything to this?
Mayor Stimple, members of council, I have a short presentation on behalf of the applicant.
Okay, wonderful, go ahead.
Thank you, and I wanted to add that following my short presentation, Mr. Tigerson, who's the owner, will talk, but I think Joy did a good job tonight, so I'll keep it short.
Okay.
My name is Michael Robinson, I'm a land use attorney representing the applicant. My mailing address is 1211 Southwest Fifth Avenue, Suite 1900, Portland 97204. With me tonight, as I said, is Hans Tigerson, the owner and developer of the Webster Ridge Apartments. Also with us tonight are Bob Sanders, that's Hans Development Manager, and Jessica Higer. Jessica is our transportation engineer. We agree with the staff report that was made to the Planning Commission and the staff report tonight, and we agree with and appreciate the Planning Commission's unanimous recommendation of the City Council that it approved this amendment. You have a letter I submitted to your city recorder earlier this week which summarizes the reasons for this request, but I think Joy did a nice job of doing it, so I'll merely add that I think the important takeaway from Joy's staff report is that Hans has had to keep units off the market, which doesn't help the need for additional multifamily units because of the lack of parking. He was able to reach an agreement with the church to buy the rear property. That'll provide additional parking and open spaces, the site plan that Joy showed you provides. I also want to point out Hans took the time to walk around the neighborhood and attempt to talk to each of the abutting property owners. His letter describing those meetings is at packet pages 10-92 through 10-94. This application benefits the public because it allows us to bring these units back online, and we'll have enough parking, and the area is satisfactory for the proposed use, Mayor Stimple. Because of the buffering, we agree with the three conditions, especially the condition prohibiting additional dwelling units here. So, for all of those reasons, we think the City Council can find that the application meets the applicable approval criteria, and as both staff and Planning Commission have recommended, we ask that the City Council approve this application. Hans is gonna follow me, but I do want to add, Mayor, if you or any member of the City Council has questions for me, Hans, Bob, or Jessica, please ask them before you close the hearing tonight. And thank you for your time.
Okay, I'll wait until after the three of you have spoken, if that's all right?
Certainly.
We may have our questions answered. Hans? You're muted.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Stimple and council members. My mailing address is Hans Tigerson, and it's 14020 Southeast Johnson Road, Suite 102, Milwaukee, Oregon, 97267. I'm the owner and developer of this property. I was involved in the land use early on when we brought this before City Council and the Planning Commission. This piece of property, the minimum density is what we built to, 122 units was the absolute minimum number of units we could build in this Portland metro on this piece of property. We tried to address the parking as best as possible by building over 50% one-bedrooms and studios. There's very limited amount of off-street parking in the neighborhood. When we initially leased up, we did not expect the high number of one-bedroom, two-car families. This property is a community that has a huge number of, you know, dual-income earners renting one-bedrooms, and it's been a challenge. We had a lot of issues with towing and ticketing early on, so to alleviate that, we have managed our, by taking a number of units, typically about 13 to 15 units offline a month, and so we're really not able to maximize the development and provided needing housing. So, we've come to provide an option that we felt best met the needs of the community by adding parking to this adjoining lot. We've done things like we're adding fencing. We have a green buffer area between this parking area that's surrounded by garages that will buffer light and sound from the neighborhoods around it. And we feel like this is gonna be a much-needed addition to the community and will solve the, you know, parking more than adequately. We have installed the fence along the retaining wall, and I inspected that on Monday, and it looks well, looks good, and creates buffer for that neighbor and the garages and adjoining fencing plus the green space between or surrounding this property will give the neighbors buffering. We've polled and met with the number of the We've polled and met with the number of the neighbors and feel like we had good support of this project. So I'd like to answer any questions that anybody has.
All right, so listen to the next person, and then we'll go ahead and ask questions. Who was next? There was someone after you, Hans.
Mayor Stimple, I think that's probably it for our for our presentation, unless you have questions of Bob or Jessica.
Okay. Does any of the councillors have any questions? Councillor Mercer?
No questions.
Councillor Todd?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, how many units are offline right now because of lack of parking?
There's, we've averaged 13 to 15 units a month. So we're we're over over 10% that we've held offline.
And are those generally one bedrooms?
Generally one bedrooms because in this community, which has been kind of shocking, all our other properties don't park this way, but our ones park the same as our three bedrooms in this community.
Wow, okay.
It's their two-car families in these units.
Anything else? Councillor Todd?
That's all. Thank you.
Councillor Reisner?
No, nothing at this time.
Councillor Tracy?
Yeah, a couple of questions for the developer. I'm going to assume that if I move into your complex, I'm going to pay to have a parking space. Is that correct? If I move in there without a car, then you've got a free space. Am I paying a premium for the parking space in my rent?
No. You're, we assign, you know, parking spaces. You're there's, we're not charging for spaces.
It's included, it's included as part of the rent for the two bed. And then the second question I had, it looks like some of some of the the notes that I've seen and some of your experiences, you've done some exit surveys for your tenants as they've left, and I see that parking is a concern in their exit surveys. But there's a couple of other notes in there that are fairly flavored with language. And it seems like in one of those instances, one gentleman actually was trying to park in his space, and another gentleman didn't let him or what have you. I mean, that that to me seemed more like a parking management problem for the site. So I'm not sure how the parking's managed. Maybe you can enlighten me to that. Meaning, do you have the assigned site? That's that's what I saw is that you have an assigned site as a resident, you have a space. But it sounds to me like the residents don't respect the spaces that they're assigned. Is that is that true?
You know, that is, some of that can happen, but those people are towed. Each resident is assigned one space, and there's 183 spaces. And then the rest of them, there's visitor parking and on assigned spaces. And so residents, it's basically first come, first served for these additional spaces.
Okay.
So.
There was one exchange that seemed like there was one gentleman who couldn't park in his space, and the other gentleman did, and they had a note exchange. I mean, that's what I'm reading.
Yeah.
This sits on the packet. That's my source of information.
You know, the manager and would have, when notified, would have had that individual's car towed.
Okay.
Proper way. You know, there is towing. We have a contract with the towing company for incidences like that.
Okay, and then I guess I didn't see anything about, I see stormwater, onsite stormwater treatment or onsite stormwater management indicated a number of times. Since this is a parking lot, are you going to be required to have a bio swell and onsite stormwater treatment prior to prior to sending it out into the conveyance systems? Is that, Joy, I see you nodding your head yes.
The development of the property, if you choose to rezone it, will require land use approval. And part of that will ensure that the stormwater is treated as required for developments in Gladstone. And so working with the Public Works Department and the Engineering Department, we will ensure that the the development meets the stormwater needs.
Okay, because I noticed there was a little back and forth too in some of the language coming from both the attorneys and the developer. Not exactly, didn't say, seem like they were exactly landing on what stormwater treatment conditions would have to be required for that property. I mean, it's a parking lot, right? So there's a lot of oil. There just is. So, okay, I have no further questions. Thank you very much, and thank you, Hans.
Councillor Ripley?
I don't have any questions.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Neese?
I'm okay. Thank you.
Okay, I guess the question that I have just reflects one of Councillor Tracy's. And this area, is the storm and sewer combined, or are they separate? Joy?
Based on the information gathered during the pre-application conference, it is my understanding that they're separate in this location.
Okay, so that would make it easier. And then I know with the original development in Hans, you all may know this, is there was a water, a freshwater pressure issue. Has that been addressed, and is that going to be impacting this additional accessory use at all?
Good questions, Mayor Stimple. And back to just the storm and sanitary, there's going to be no living units created by this expansion. So we will be treating all the stormwater on site. And, you know, there is a plan that, based on your approval tonight, we will submit and take it through the, you know, the approval processes. So though as far as the storm, that'll be handled. As far as the pressure system, everything is going to be one story. And what we did solve, we spent considerable amount of time with testing, and we dealt with the pressure issues. We also, based on the height of the building, that's a big factor in your pressure. And, you know, as you go up floors, and, you know, these are one-story buildings, they're garages, there aren't going to be living units. And we addressed that. We we brought in a number of consultants in the early development and addressed those issues. So I think they're handled. Certainly, everything will be being reviewed by, you know, the Public Works Department.
Okay. And then I'm assuming, knowing the Planning Commission, that you talked about pervious surface in the parking area versus impervious, if that would be an option to help with stormwater management? No, that comes later, but it's definitely something to think about. I think we talked about that back in 2015, when the initial development went in. I have a question for Joy. My concern, coming from the Planning Commission a couple of years ago, is that once this is zoned multifamily residential, and I understand that there are some conditions, special conditions attached, but in the future, once it's zoned MR, it's tied to MR requirements, and it can be challenged. Do you see that? I mean, I'm I'm okay with the parking, but I'm just really concerned that a couple of years down the road, the special conditions will be challenged, and we're going to have more apartments there.
Based on the Gladstone Municipal Code that requires the special conditions to go into the, to be recorded and tied to the deed, I don't know how it would be how it would be challenged. And if it would be challenged successfully. That might be a question for the attorney.
Yeah, but with so much pressure on high-density development, I mean, they're looking to put high-density everywhere possible. So that's that's just my concern. And Chad's kind of he has nothing to say on this one. Yes, Hans?
So Mayor Stimple, you know, we are bringing this in as a multifamily zone. Increasing density continues to exponentially increase our challenges to the site. And the reason why we're just adding parking is because there's not a financial benefit, and we just continue to stress and overload the system that, you know, and the challenges we have there. So you know, we're trying to solve a problem, not increase a problem. And that's why we're adding parking. And we've we've spent, you know, three years trying to handle this problem and come to, you know, the best plan. We've designed probably 20 different plans. They all, you know, trying to get parking that worked. We had a number of meetings, number of pre-apps with the land use department at Clackamas County, trying to figure out a way. And we basically figured out the best way was not increasing any density. And that, so I think we're solving your concerns here with just adding parking.
I appreciate the thoughtful approach, absolutely. And Michael?
Thank you, Mayor Stimple. I don't know if Chad has a comment on this, but I'll offer a comment on your statement. I think you're right to be concerned, but let me tell you why I don't think there's going to, why there shouldn't be a problem from a legal standpoint. This condition runs with the land, so it's set up, it's special condition one. It's set up so that the only thing, this piece of land that's being rezoned or is being asked to be rezoned can be used for are the accessory uses. Can't have a principal use on it. In order to change that, one of two things would have to happen. Either someone would have to appeal this decision if the council approves it, and certainly the applicant isn't going to do it, and I can't imagine anyone else would. Or if someone decided later on that they wanted to change it, they'd have to go through the same process we're going through tonight. But Hans has told you, he has no intention to do it, and it runs with the land. So I think, you know, I don't, I don't intend to provide you with legal advice, but in my opinion, it's the structure of the condition is satisfactory to ensure that you're not going to have a problem with someone putting dwellings on it.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, the only thing I'd add to that, and I think maybe this is what you were getting at when you were talking about the they in your statement, is I agree with Mike and I agree with Joy, but you do always run the risk of preemption at a higher level. So to the extent the state comes in and tries to preempt this and require more density, you know, that could be a risk. I think the reality of that is not great for this particular piece of property, given the financial aspects that Hans was just talking about. I think you're probably pretty safe on this particular property, but I do think you're right. You do always run a risk of, you know, a higher entity coming in and trying to preempt this type of condition.
Like House Bill 2001?
Right.
Yeah. The only other, Mayor, if I could, I'll just, I think I can add one thing to this, and then you've probably heard enough on it. I think the likelihood, as Chad said, of the state, it would have to be DLCD or the Legislature or Metro actually saying you have to do something different on this property is virtually nil. They can, they can, for example, House Bill 2001, they can tell you have to, how you have to provide zoning, but I don't have any confidence that the state or Metro could tell you how, that you actually have to do something different on land that's already developed. So I agree with Chad.
Okay, thank you. Those are the only questions that I had. So do we have anybody that's rebutting, that wants to provide rebuttal? Any hands? I don't see any. Tammy, do you have anybody?
I do not have any, and I do not see any hands.
Okay, so first would be testimony in favor of this. Would, if anybody's interested, raise your hands or dial star nine now. I don't see any hands. Tammy, do you have anything?
I see no hands, and I have nothing.
All right, testimony against this proposal. Raise your hands now or star nine if you're on the phone. I don't see anything. Neutral testimony. Please raise your hands now or dial star nine. All right, I don't see anything. So then I will call for a motion to close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
I'll second this.
Motion was made by Councillor Todd and seconded by Councillor Reisner to close the public hearing. Do we have any further discussion? I don't see anything. Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Councillor Ripley?
Yes.
Councillor Neese? Councillor Neese? I think she was having trouble with her phone again. Councillor Tracy? Councillor Reisner?
Yes.
Councillor Todd?
Yes.
Councillor Mercer? Mayor Stimple?
Yes, do you want to ask Councillor Neese again?
Councillor Neese?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can hear you now, yes.
Okay, all right.
All right. The public hearing for ordinance 1504, rezoning from R 7.2, single-family residential to MR multifamily residential to allow the development of additional parking and recreation for the existing Webster Ridge Apartments, 18085 Webster Road, Stony Ridge LLC, has been closed at 8:17 PM, 10:13 2020. All right, do we have any further discussion?
Actually, I do. I have a same concern that you brought up in regards to zoning it multi-family. On the surface opens up a possible can of worms where they could add additional, an additional apartment three stories high. Because we did have a lot of concerned residents that all of a sudden, look, you know, people are able to look in their backyards after this thing was, or during this, the building of this current apartment complex. And but listening to what we heard tonight, it sounds like there's some safeguards that are been put into it that would prevent that from happening outright.
Yeah, it sounds like it, but like Chad confirmed, you know, there's, there's a lot of pressure for higher density, and who knows what's going to happen in the future, but but those conditions look like they'll be pretty lock solid for now, anyway.
Yep.
All right, I'm going to call the councillors' individual, Councillor Mercer. Questions or concerns?
No questions, concerns.
Councillor Todd?
Yeah, my only question was, and it wasn't a concern, it was just sort of something that popped in my head. Since this is property being purchased by Christity Baptist, I'm assuming then it becomes a taxable lot again, once it gets converted into this. Is that how it would work?
Mayor?
Yeah, Chad?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, Councillor Reisner, anything else?
No.
Councillor Tracy?
So it's an accessory to a multifamily complex, and it's going to be taxed, it's on the tax rolls, correct? Yeah, that would have been good information to bring forward, just just as a, some advice as you're presenting. Thank you.
Councillor Ripley?
I don't have any questions.
Councillor Neese?
I I have none. Thank you.
All right. So would someone like to make a motion to approve ordinance 1504? Come on, somebody needs to be brave.
Okay, I make a motion to approve ordinance 1504 to amend the Gladstone zoning map and comprehensive plan as recommended by the Planning Commission.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Councillor Reisner and seconded by Councillor Todd to approve ordinance 1504. Do we have any further discussion? I don't see any. Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Councillor Ripley?
Yes.
Councillor Neese? Counselor Nice.
Yes.
Counselor Tracy.
Based on planning, commission, recommendation, and the fact that I don't see a lot of opposition to this from the neighbors, I'm going to go ahead and vote yes.
Counselor Reisner.
I did have Counselor Tracy's thoughts, yes.
Counselor Todd.
I concur with Counselor Tracy and Counselor Reisner's thoughts, and yes.
Counselor Mercero.
Yes.
Mayor Stimple.
I say yes, but still my concerns about the MR zones are real, but I think the, the special conditions are good, so yes. So this was unanimous, so we can, um, go ahead with the second reading. Would you like to take, do that as well, Counselor Reisner?
Sure, um, second reading, I make a motion to approve ordinance 1504, amend the Gladstone, uh, zoning map and comprehensive plan as recommended by the planning commission.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion was made by Counselor Reisner and seconded by Counselor Tracy to approve the second reading of ordinance 1504, rezoning from our point, R 7.2, single-family residential to MR multi-family residential to allow the development of additional parking and recreation for the existing Webster Ridge Apartments, 18085 Webster Road, Stony Ridge LLC. Um, Counselor Mercero, any, can, any concerns or questions?
No concerns or questions.
Counselor Todd.
No, thank you.
Counselor Reisner.
No.
Counselor Tracy.
Oh, thank you.
Counselor Ripley.
I don't care.
Counselor Nice. Counselor Nice.
I think we may have lost her.
Okay, well, um, then let's go ahead with the roll call vote, please.
Counselor Ripley.
Yes.
Counselor Nice. Counselor Tracy.
Previous conditions, yes.
Counselor Reisner.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Mercero.
Yes.
Mayor Stimple.
Yes, so the second reading for ordinance 1504 was approved at 8:23 PM, October 13th, 2020. All right, the last public hearing is to consider approval of ordinance 1505, amending the Gladstone Municipal Code, referred to as the GMC, Chapter 12.12 Park Rules. Staff.
Good evening, Mayor, the city councilors. A little brief history, you have my staff report in front of you. A little brief history on how I got this is when I first arrived, I was asked to review, uh, the parks, uh, GMC that covers parks 12.12 and behaviors within our city parks. Um, and looking at that, I also took into consideration also that the Parks Board took significant time in developing these, uh, these ordinances. And, and, uh, the, from my review, the, they were fine, the language is fine. The only question I had was the penalty phase of, of this ordinance. So really what we're talking about is not really changing much of the ordinance at all, uh, but really looking at the penalty phase of the ordinance. And, and then the process in doing that is, is utilizing ORS for criminal behavior, which is the organized statutes and what gives us authority to arrest as police officers and what doesn't versus a park violation or a city ordinance. Um, and utilizing that and sticking with, with monetary violations, uh, uh, or monetary forms of penalty for violations of park rules. Now, one may ask, well, how do we get this to stop? With, within our ordinance, we also have what's called an exclusionary process. And we can exclude somebody if they violate park rules. And, and after a due process, if found guilty, they could be removed for 30 days, not be allowed in the park. If they do arrive back in the park, then it could be a potential trespass. My recommendation, and it's turning out to be more and more of an industry standard, and, and what I'm really more familiar with and, and working with park rules and ordinances is actually following this process. I think we're on much more solid legal ground, um, as we move forward. So really what we're asking for is, and recommendation is, to change some of the missing, most of the misdemeanor charges in this section down to Class A violations with carry a $720 monetary fine. Utilize the exclusionary process if needed. And, and, um, and there's only one other, one other piece of the ordinance that we would recommend just keep maintaining the same, so unless it's specified specifically, which is the smoking part, which is with a Class C infraction, instead of a Class A. So essentially, if I'm hoping I'm making sense to you, is, is moving down, is changing the penalty phase of this ordinance to a Class A infraction. And, and utilizing ORS, if, if we are forced to make arrests in the park, that we utilize the ORS for that. So, uh, we presented this, or I presented this to the Parks Board, who agreed and asked me to move this forward, uh, for recommendation of the city council. So that's, that's what I'm doing. The only other piece of this is, is that you'll see in there is, there's a section E and a section F in the ordinance that is really duplicate language. And it's already, it's already covered in our, in our ordinance. So I would recommend just eliminating the duplicate language and maintaining everything else.
All right, does anybody have any questions for staff? Counselor Mercero?
No questions.
Counselor Todd?
No, not at the same, thanks.
Counselor Reisner?
Uh, no questions, but a comment in that, uh, as, uh, the chief has, uh, has mentioned, the, the Parks Board has been working on this for many years, back when I was the liaison, and, uh, we did a lot of, uh, great work. And, um, there was a bit, a, a question about the penalties, but, uh, wanted to move it forward back a few years ago, just so that we could get, uh, updated rules. And with the promise of what, uh, Chief Schmuber has just done is, uh, take a look at the, the penalties, because as, uh, over the years, as I've ridden with, uh, officers, and we've stopped, or not, not stopped, um, met people in the park that, uh, were there after closing hours, and, um, discovered that they could be arrested for being there after closing hours, was a shock to pretty much everybody, uh, that was approached. And, uh, I, uh, so I've always kind of caught, uh, been concerned about, um, the, uh, well, the excessive, uh, penalty for just being in, in the park after hours. So I, I support this and hope the rest of you will too.
Counselor Tracy.
No questions or comments.
Counselor Ripley.
I don't have any questions or comments.
Counselor Nice.
No, I have, I have no questions or comments.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'm so happy to see these moving forward. Thank you very much, much, Chief. This, this is definitely needed. Um, do we have any rebuttal for this? Uh, any testimony in favor? Um, I see a hand up for Tracy Hill. I'm not sure if that's a real hand up for this. Tammy?
I don't see anything, Mayor.
Okay, because I see it on my screen. All right, um, any testimony in opposition? Um, any neutral testimony? I don't see anything. I'll say, okay, so I call for a motion to close the public hearing. Would somebody like to do that, please?
I'm moving that we close the public hearing.
Second?
I'll second it.
A motion was made by Counselor Reisner and seconded by Counselor Nice. Any further discussion? Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Ripley.
Yes.
Counselor Nice. Counselor Nice.
Yes.
Counselor Tracy.
Aye.
Counselor Reisner.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Mercero.
Aye.
Mayor Stimple.
Yes, so the public hearing to consider approval of ordinance 1505, amending the Gladstone Municipal Code, the GMC, Chapter 12.12 Park Rules, is closed at 8:31 PM, October 13th, 2020. Do we have any further discussion? Counselor Mercero?
No discussion.
Counselor Todd?
No discussion.
Counselor Reisner?
No.
Counselor Tracy?
No.
Counselor Ripley?
No.
Counselor Nice?
No.
All right, so would, um, Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Uh, what are we doing, a roll call?
Oh, we're not doing a roll call vote, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm, look, I'm reading what's coming up next, trying to get prepared. All right, so, um, would somebody make a motion to approve, um, ordinance 1505?
I make a motion, um, motion. I make a motion to approve ordinance 1505, amending Gladstone Municipal Code, subsection 12.12, changing the penalty from misdemeanor to a Class A infraction, carrying a monetary fine of up to $720, and removing duplicate language.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion was made by Counselor Mercero and seconded by Counselor Reisner to approve ordinance 1505, amending the Gladstone Municipal Code, the GMC, Chapter 12.12 Park Rules. Any further discussion? Nothing? Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Ripley.
Yes.
Counselor Nice.
Yes.
Counselor Tracy.
Aye.
Counselor Reisner.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Mercero.
Yes.
Mayor Stimple.
Yes, so it was unanimous, so we can move forward with the second reading. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the second reading? You did a great job, Counselor Mercero. You want to do it again?
All right, I'll do it again. For the second reading, oops, I better get back to my, uh...
We all have too many papers on our desks.
Right.
Number 11.
All right. For the second reading, I make a motion to approve ordinance 1505, amending Gladstone Municipal Code, subsection 12.12, changing the penalty from a misdemeanor to a Class A infraction, carrying a monetary fine of up to $720, and removing duplicate language.
Do I have a second?
I'll second again.
Motion was made by Counselor Mercero and seconded by Counselor Reisner to approve the second reading of ordinance 1505. Do we have any further discussion? I don't see anything. Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Ripley.
Yes.
Counselor Nice.
Yes.
Counselor Tracy.
Aye.
Counselor Reisner.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Mercero.
Aye.
Mayor Stimple.
Yes, so the second reading for the approval of ordinance 1505, amending Gladstone Municipal Code, GMC, Chapter 12.12 Park Rules, has been approved at 8:35 PM, October 13th, 2020. Phew, all right. We don't have those very often, thank you, guys. Um, so the next item on our agenda is, uh, business carried forward. The first item is, uh, an update on the draft Clackamas County Library Advisory Board of Trustees. Staff?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. As you recall, at the last city council meeting in September, Counselor Reisner had asked to put a staff report and a draft letter in the city council packet regarding concerns expressed by the Gladstone Library Board and himself with the draft makeup of the new Clackamas County Library Advisory Board of Trustees. At that time, he pulled it from the council agenda. Since then, uh, the mayor met with Commissioner Paul Savas. They scheduled a meeting, which involved, uh, the administrator, Laura Zetner, the library director, and myself to discuss the options and the concerns for the new Clackamas County Library Advisory Board. Per our settlement agreement, we are required to dissolve the current Gladstone Library Board, and staff has kept the city council updated on that. And the city attorney and I will bring that to you at the November 10th meeting. Clackamas County is creating a new, uh, Board of Trustees, and there's been concern about the makeup of the board not being proportionate based on, um, Gladstone representation versus Oak Lodge, the unincorporated area of both, of Oak Lodge and the city of Gladstone. So we met, uh, with county staff, one elected official and the mayor, and really how we summarized, um, that conversation was that, uh, there could be more clarity, could be made around the purpose of the group and what their role is. The county commission does not have an interest in expanding the makeup of the board to more than five members. However, they did propose adding one elected official from Gladstone and one elected official from the Board of County Commissioners to be on that, uh, board that is non-voting members. The city of Gladstone has a desire to create its own ad hoc committee. Um, we will likely bring a proposal to you to do that in January 2021 that will consist of Gladstone residents. But our concern would be, what is the conduit? Because if the city of Gladstone has an ad hoc committee, they report to the Gladstone City Council, but the county's the one that's overseeing the library. So one of the creative ideas that we came up with is that whoever is chosen as the Gladstone representative on the Clackamas County Library Advisory Board would also chair the Gladstone Ad Hoc Committee, so that that person could be the liaison, um, for both of the entities. The county's open to revisiting this arrangement after one year, if there have been a number of majority votes made by the board that are not favorable for Gladstone. They don't expect that to happen. As far as the ad hoc committee's scope of work, it's yet to be determined. I'm going to work from, uh, work with a couple of the current library board members to help develop a proposal that we will bring to the city council in January. It will likely include between five and seven members, um, and the focus will be on how to best service the patrons that come to the library, removing the barriers for the public to represent community interest in Gladstone, um, build our relationships with the school district, parking, library foundation, and Portland Avenue businesses. Uh, the mayor and I did report this to the Gladstone Library Board, uh, last week. And again, they were not real receptive, disappointed that the makeup of the board is not going to change. Counselor Reisner asked that I put this item back in the packet tonight. And with that, I will hand it over to Mayor Stimple or Counselor Reisner.
Well, I'd like to say a couple of things, if you don't mind, Jackie, because, um, I have been sitting on the last couple of the library board meetings, and I have to say that I was incredibly disappointed in the last one. It was, um, painful. I was embarrassed because it just seemed unprofessional. There was a lot of accusations made and there was obviously a lack of trust. What people don't understand is we have an amazing opportunity to build a library. Actually, no, we have an amazing opportunity to build two libraries and both of them are in the Gladstone Library District. They are Gladstone Libraries. This is one district, two library buildings. Just, and that's the best way to serve the district population. Under the previous leadership, there was absolutely no way that we could have built a new library and that became crystal clear when we had a financial analysis done and they crunched the numbers. These are people that do this for a living and they said that we couldn't have built a library. We'd have been stuck with the one that we had and we would have had very little money to do any improvements or just basic maintenance. But thankfully, our relationship with the county was salvageable. We were able to come to the table and come up with an agreement to build these two new libraries. We should be thankful and we should be really excited about this opportunity, but all I see is this distrust. Now, I want to remind people that when we were looking at how to size the libraries, it was based on population and we kicked and screamed and fought to have the unincorporated Gladstone population included in our number. And I want to say that again, we fought to include those people in our number so that Gladstone would have a bigger library. Now, with the makeup of this advisory board, suddenly, this unincorporated group, we don't want them to be a part of it. We have one person from Gladstone on this. We're proposing, they're proposing, one person from Gladstone, one person from unincorporated Gladstone and three people from Oak Lodge, plus an elected official from Gladstone and an elected county commissioner. So when we wanted a bigger library, we were all open to these people being a part of our group and our team and now all of a sudden, we don't want them representing us. I think that's kind of hypocritical. They are part of Gladstone in all intents and purposes. They are part of Gladstone. So that would give us two people on the advisory board and three from Oak Lodge, plus the two elected officials. The elected officials are going to be on there to make sure that this board doesn't go sideways. And it's also to kind of give clarity so that we, the people that are on this board, know that they have a direct conduit to the people that are making the decisions. And with this ad hoc committee, instead of just having our two representatives, now we've got a whole board, a subcommittee, that will be advising our two representatives to this Library Advisory Board. So that gives more people the opportunity to weigh in on how our libraries are going to run. And I know that that conduit issue is a big one, but I want to tell you that maybe each of the individual ad hoc members aren't going to have a direct conduit to the Board of County Commissioners who ultimately are the ones that are making the decisions. But I can tell you that as long as I'm mayor or most of these elected officials, if they want to, we can pick up the phone and we can call those county commissioners at any time if we see things going wrong. That's exactly what I did with Paul Savis after the last Library Board meeting, the one before the last. So obviously, it worked because we immediately came to the table and we started looking for solutions. So there, it isn't a closed loop. It is an open loop and we are definitely going to have conversations if things start going bad. So my big concern right now is that we still have people sitting there that have this us versus them mentality and that's not how we can move forward. It is all us. It is one library district. We are all in this together, but it is two buildings. And I believe that the board that's sitting there right now, I don't know if they can make those thoughtful decisions to help us move forward. I'm really concerned about that. So we're going to be dissolving board in November. And then we'll see what happens. We're going to look at an ad hoc committee hopefully in January. But what I think I was unclear on is number one, what the purpose was of this advisory committee and it is a lot less than what I thought. They don't have the financial ability to make decisions. It's really fairly minimal. And this technical advisory board that's actually working on the design of the library is a completely separate entity. It has absolutely nothing to do with this advisory board. That group will be ended as soon as the library is built. They will be gone and this ad hoc and advisory board will be... So I'm asking that we put history behind us because it's not serving us at all and I want to admit that a lot of, some of the bad blood that has got us to where we are and this distrust was, is on us. It's not all them. And so we need to step up and start moving forward. We need to start writing our next chapter instead of being bogged down in all the crap that came on before. You know, this is a great opportunity, people, and I would just hate to see it go sideways right now. That's all I have to say. Counselor Reisner?
Thank you. Well, I agree. It's one library service area, two libraries. However, I have to disagree with the mayor in regards to the makeup of this advisory board. I feel that, you know, being that there's two different buildings, one Gladstone, one Oak Lodge, that the representation should be equal. And yes, five members would work, you know, would work, two from Oak Lodge, two from Gladstone and then one from the unincorporated area. And, you know, want to throw in a couple of elected officials? I think more people involved, the better. But, and yes, there has been some history that has been, you know, not conducive to, oh, I say, you know, well, things have been said and things have occurred, but I do agree with Mayor Stimple about, you know, going forward. But at the same time, I think we need to be represented equally going forward if we're in this together rather than a lopsided advisory board as this current proposal is. So, and one thing that I think also that got kind of lost is that the bottom line is the county commissioners are the ones that are going to be making the decisions. It's only an advisory, just like our current Library Board is only advisory. And decisions, final decisions were made by us. However, as, well, we have, we listen to our advisory boards, like we did this evening, listened to the planning commission and took their advice. And I'm not saying that the City Council does or has ever just rubber stamped. I know that that hasn't been the case. But I think in this case, if we want, let me say, a cohesive existence, if we're both supposed to be in this together, we should be in it together equally, not lopsided. So that's why I was asking that, we asked the county commissioners that the advice, that the makeup of the board be more equal. I feel that Mitzi is, she's done a superb job putting together the bylaws and I agree with everything in the bylaws except just the makeup of the membership of the advisory board. So that's all, you know, unless, you know, if you have questions, I'll be glad to take them, but that's my, my take in that several, well, one other thing is that talked to many members of the community, all library lovers, on the Library Foundation, also, you know, Library Board members and from our city. Granted, I haven't talked to anybody from north of the city that's in their service district, but then I represent Gladstone. So that's who I've reached out to and asked for, and they, every one of them is looking and hoping that we get equal representation. So, thank you.
Oh, just a clarification question, Counselor Reisner.
Right.
When this whole thing was started years ago, Oak Lodge had zero say and zero vote in this whole library district issue. Is that correct?
I...
They had no representation. We were the sole representation for the district.
Okay, I, I don't remember. So I couldn't, you know, couldn't answer yea or nay on that. You know, if that's what you're saying, then, you know, it must be true.
Yeah, I believe that's the case. And then when we had the library, the original Library Advisory Board or whatever that group was that we had, out of, I think, what, forty some people that were on it or thirty some people, I think Michael Milch might know, there was only three people that were from the Oak Lodge area that had any say whatsoever in where the libraries were going to go, what they were going to look like, how we were going to split the population. They had minimal representation. So I just want to remind people that up until recently, Michael?
If you're talking about the board or the group that was created in, I think it was early 2014, after the defeat of the Webster Library.
Yes.
People were invited to join from both communities. The City Council, I think originally, had intended to keep that committee small. They accepted everyone who volunteered to be a part of it and they added, I think, another five or so people who had been part of the Save Gladstone group. So it did end up being somewhat disproportionate in favor of Gladstone at that time. But the Oak Lodge Library, which was in existence at that time and which continues to be in existence, had always had its own Library Board, which, well, which was a Library Board of Trustees that reported to the Board of County Commissioners, which is the same situation we're going to have here. They were the only, county-only library. All the other libraries were located in cities.
Okay, Counselor Mercero, any questions, comments?
Only making a statement, I agree with Counselor Reisner that the board, and I'll go back to, even though it's two libraries and they're supposedly both our libraries, really what is considered our library, I believe, to our library users is our library. And we presently have a 20% vote with one person, which won't help them get whatever they would like if they don't think it's dealt with fairly amongst the two libraries. So I agree with Counselor Reisner that we need at least one more vote.
We have two votes, Gladstone and Gladstone Incorporated. Those are our two votes.
That's not two votes for Gladstone.
Okay, Counselor Todd?
Um, so, I mean, the way that I've always understood it was that it was supposed to be proportional representation, not equal representation. Isn't that, well, how this sort of started earlier, I mean, that's what, so the 20%, is that proportional for us?
Yes.
My population? So I'm trying to understand why now it's, there's some, why people are upset about it, because I've heard that for at least a year now that that's what it was going to be, that I started really sort of following this. Alright, so we're talking about having five is what you're proposing to send that you talked with Paul Savis about. Is that correct?
Five is what was originally agreed to. This is what's coming from the, this was the original IGA, I believe, was five.
From the original IGA. So you've got the five and now you want to add the two elected officials that are not going to be, they're going to be non-voting, correct?
Correct.
So still going to be five. And I just, I wanted to clarify because I did watch the library meeting from, what was it, last week? And I just want to make clear that you talked to Paul Savis on your own, sort of trying to facilitate this, that you weren't directed.
Trying to get people, yeah, trying to come together with.
But you weren't directed by council because what you said on the meeting was that you were directed by council to do this. So I'm just wanting to make sure that we're very clear that this was just something that you were trying to facilitate because we didn't do anything last month, right?
No, because Neil pulled the letter. Yes.
Okay, okay, because that's what I was confused by because you said you were directed by council. So I'm in a quandary. I'll wait to listen more to see here what, I mean, I don't know, it sounds like it's very, there's a lot of emotions. I'm not really sure what the problem would be, what the fears are coming into this, not having three, three and one or whatever, you know, whatever the decision would be. Sounded like from the meeting that I watched, there was a lot of fear and I'm not sure what that fear is based in and what the fear of what could happen if we didn't have equal but we have proportional. So I'll just wait to listen for right now.
Thank you. Counselor Tracy?
I share the concerns Counselor Todd just raised. What I'm hearing too from constituents, I ask the question, you know, would it be better to just have an alternate so that you can caucus? And I'm not hearing that that's a solution. So if we had an alternate that actually could work with somebody as a second member from Gladstone just to be able to give both members the ability to caucus. I understand that the voting power of this, you know, as I think Counselor Reisner pointed out, this is an advisory council only or committee only. I'm kind of at a loss because I think we keep going round and round and I know, Mayor, you're probably feeling pretty tired of it too. It just feels like a merry-go-round. We cannot, we can't land on anything here. And I'm wondering whether or not, I mean, I think the solutions that you're putting forward tonight are good, but I also know that we're going to hear back from the Library Board, the Gladstone Library Board, that's going to be dissolved, I think, in what, two weeks? We're not satisfied with this. So is, I guess the question to the board is, what do they need? Do people are going to represent the city in an advisory capacity, really, what do they need? Do they need the ability to be able to caucus with somebody from Gladstone? Or do they really feel like they need the voting power on the board, which is an advisory board, when actually Board of County Commissioners are going to make the final decision on most of this stuff, are they not?
Yeah.
Yes.
So I'm still in the feedback loop, is what I'm saying. Because this is just a feedback loop that, you know, Mayor, you've been working on this for a long time. People in this community have been working on it for a long time. I think the distrust, it goes all the way back to long before my time with the Webster Road property. It's still alive and well and let's remind everybody, we have a new, you know, a couple of new county commissioners coming in there in June potentially, right? At least one we know of. So hopefully, we can get this solved tonight.
Counselor Ripley? Counselor Ripley?
I don't have any comments, right?
Okay, Counselor Neese?
Yeah, I kind of go along with Counselor Todd because that, the understanding was proportion and then, and I thought it was three, one and one. One from Gladstone, one from the Jennings Lodge and then Oak Grove. But how much say so are we really going to have? Because isn't this going to come down to the county commissioners telling us what's what?
That's correct, that they're the ones that's going to approve the bylaws and so they're the ones that are going to decide how many members and from where. And that's why I'm asking that we write a letter saying we want it to be equal.
Okay, so that's...
Counselor Neese, you talked to Paul Savis the other day. Did you get any more insight from him?
Well, I was really confused because he was talking three different committees and then the one committee was going to be eliminated November 14th, he said. And I couldn't understand why he was putting, why there was going to be two more committees. Why couldn't we just have one and just work with the group of people? And my understanding is it's going to be 10 people involved in that ad hoc. Am I wrong on that?
No, we were hoping more like five to seven people.
Okay, alright.
Normal boards would be.
Because he threw out a number of 10 and I thought, well, that's really a lot of people to have on there.
Oh, yeah, that would be like herding cats.
Right, and so, but, and I had actually asked him to come and speak tonight because I was still kind of confused of the direction they were... because I was still kind of confused of the direction they were wanting to go, and I really didn't feel like I got a really good answer.
Okay.
So I'm kind of on the fence still.
Okay, well, we need to make some kind of a decision on this one, because we're going to be dissolving the one library board in two weeks. And we need to let the county know what direction we want to go. I'm in favor of an ad hoc committee, and I'm in favor of going with the proposal that we talked about with the two and three. One Gladstone, one Gladstone Incorporated, three Oak Lodge, which is basically all unincorporated, and then two elected officials. And then relooking at it in a year, and if it starts going sideways, it will be relooked at before a year. I can promise you that.
So, question I have, and I talked here a little over a week ago with Paul Savis and Mayor Stimple, is, you know, if there's a possibility about things going sideways, why not give equal representation? The, you know, the nod, the go-ahead with that? And because in my mind, it's going to be less likely to go sideways than an advisory committee that's lopsided.
Well, the county looks at proportionate representation a specific way, and they have history of supporting that formula. And they're, I don't believe, willing to change that. They want consistency. They don't want this board to be any different than all of their others. Jackie, is that your understanding as well?
That is correct. And I think that if there's any decision to be made tonight, it's whether or not you want to submit the letter that Councilor Reisner drafted to the Board of County Commissioners.
Okay, Councilor Todd.
I just had a question. So there is, there's a history with this, on what proportionate means, whether it's proportionate of population, or proportionate of buildings, correct?
Yes.
In Clackamas County.
Yes.
And can you give an example of that?
Population.
It's based on population. That's how the county's always done it.
Right, but there's a scenario that's similar to this, where there's a two-branch system, correct?
The Sandy Library, Sandy and Hoodland, I believe, is that the only one? And it's done by population. All of theirs are done by population. Is there another double, dual library district, Neil, that you know of? I think it's just Sandy and Hoodland.
No, it's just Sandy and Hoodland, you're correct.
Yeah. Yes, Michael Milch?
Just to add to that, again, the principle is proportional representation of people who live in a library district who are in unincorporated areas. And for example, the Oregon City Library, their seven-member board has five members who live in the Oregon city limits, and two others from two defined zip codes that are outside the city limits, but that are part of the, a part of the library district. So once again, you know, and if it were done by buildings, there would be no representation at all for people in the unincorporated areas, because there are no libraries built in unincorporated areas anywhere in the entire library, Clackamas County Library District, except for the unincorporated area of Oak Grove. So they do them proportionally by population. This was explained to us even before we signed the IGA back in November of 2019, and stressed very strongly by the county representatives who came to that meeting to brief our local library board on this issue. It's always been by population, not by number of buildings.
Does that answer your question, Tracy?
It does, you really do.
Okay, so can we just do a consensus on whether we forward Councilor Reisner's letter? Is that okay with you guys? Okay, so Councilor Mersrow, send it or don't send it?
Send it.
Councilor Todd?
Don't send it.
Councilor Reisner? Councilor Tracy? Councilor Ripley?
Don't.
Councilor Neese?
Don't.
And I say no as well. So we're not going to send the letter.
Thank you very much for the time and the great discussion that we had on this.
Yeah, thank you very much for the discussion. This has been going on for a very, very long time, by the way. So, thank you. Next is Halloween. Staff?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Halloween has traditionally been an event that Gladstone has embraced. Given the pandemic that we've been dealing with in 2020, we very cautiously were watching what the Center for Disease Control Guidelines would be in regards to kicking off the holiday season, starting with Halloween. A few weeks ago, we brought to your attention that the CDC did release some guidelines in regards to those cities that wanted to do something for Halloween. Our fire chief, and our police chief, and myself discussed what we were comfortable presenting to the city council. We said we could do this drive-through trick-or-treat program on Portland Avenue, if that was something that we wanted to pursue. I heard from a majority of you that we're okay with that. So the mayor applied for an application. And we sent letters out to all of the affected property owners. Last week, we've received some comments back that I think it's important that we bring to your attention tonight, to have a healthy conversation on whether or not we want to go forward with this event. It's a difficult situation to be in, but since we first approved this event, COVID numbers are increasing. And so we just wanted to make sure we were having a transparent conversation with the council to talk about whether or not you want to go ahead and have this event. And I also reached out to the city's insurance provider and got some comments back about what our liability is for having this event. So with that, I'm not sure if anybody else has questions to come up, but I, we've received three questions since we sent out the letters. One was specific to the Portland Avenue Pizza Company on how customers can drive up for curbside pickup between four and 7:30 PM on Halloween. The next question we received is how will traffic be affected on Portland Avenue during the event? And another question we received is how will candy be handed out? And so I think I'll start with those and ask the mayor to address those, since she was the applicant for the event.
Okay, so the first one was Portland Avenue Pizza Company, which I had multiple discussions with them, and I really, I don't know how that would work out, other than I told them they could market this as come down and get candy and pick up a pizza too. So it could be a good thing. But yeah, the way that it would be set up is we would have booths on one side, or people handing out candy that would be masked and gloved for CDC requirements. Cars driving down the center of Portland Avenue, and those would have the trick-or-treaters. And so the givers, is what I'm calling them, would go out masked, gloved, and hand-wrapped candy, and put it in whatever the kids had in the cars. And we would have the social distancing between the booths or trunks. And this is really the only way that we could guarantee some kind of social distancing on the trick-or-treaters. We absolutely could not do it as a walk-through event. So I'm not sure how we could do the Portland Avenue Pizza Company. And I just told you about where traffic would be down Portland Avenue. I'm worried about where traffic would enter Portland Avenue. I have an idea of where they would exit, because it would be closed from potentially, what, Exeter to Berkeley? I have a couple extra concerns that I've heard. There are some businesses that are really upset that we didn't have planning meetings, lengthy planning meetings leading up to this. Well, but we couldn't. We had to wait till CDC came out with their guidelines before we could do anything at all. And we really were thinking that we shouldn't do it, but people asking about Halloween is probably the most prevalent thing I've been hearing for the past month. People are desperately looking for something to do, something fun. We've had nothing fun to look forward to, and the kids, the kids really need something. But it's going to take a lot of coordination this year. I'm one person, and I would need a ton of help. And I'm not confident that I would be able to get that help. It would break my heart, say no, we can't do it, because I think I look forward to it as much as everybody else does, probably more. But we can't, I can't do it by myself. I do have already thirty people committed to booths and trunks, and I have more people waiting to hear whether we're going to do it or not. Somerset wants to come down, which I thought was awesome. Couple of the car dealerships, and there's quite a few people that are really, really excited about this. We had a band already, the Frankenband, wants to be there at bogies and witch dancers. But yeah, it's going to be super, super challenging this year. So any questions? Councilor Mersrow?
I have, I originally voted for this without a problem. With the increased numbers that I'm seeing, I'm concerned about the risk to the city to have it now.
There are other communities that are having events. We're not the only ones. But they're not going to be like ours. Ours would have been, or is. It would be different. Councilor Todd?
Mayor? Oh, me?
Yes, Councilor Todd.
I definitely had heard from quite a few downtown business owners. I don't know if they were concerned so much that there weren't lengthy, lengthy planning sessions. I think a lot of them were concerned that the first they'd heard about it was on social media, when it does affect them, and they are not able to start doing some planning and see if they want to be involved, or maybe switch some stuff around. Because at this point, we're two and a half weeks away. And I know that that was one of the major things, and that they're sort of hearing there's going to be a band. Well, is the band in front of bogies? So what does that do for the grooming people who stay open until six? And they're on lip, you know, I mean, I tried to get in my dog into the groomer, and it took weeks and weeks and weeks, because they can only work one person at a time, and they're working seven days a week into the evenings. So they're already dealing with their own issues from the pandemic. And now we're sort of coming in and being like, well, we're going to put a band right there, you know, that sort of stuff. I definitely heard a lot. I definitely was for it as well, because when we first sort of talked about it, it was during, you know, when the festival should have been going on. You know, I thought, oh, jeez, it's not going to still be a problem in October, and, you know, here we are. I don't want to be a part of a super-spreader event. I don't want that to be what Gladstone is known for, you know? So those are my concerns with it, and I think a lot of downtown business people were concerned more that they were sort of finding out what was going to happen in front of their businesses from other places, not from, like, hearing it firsthand and being able to make some plans right now.
And I did go door-to-door as soon as I possibly could, within two days of finding out that we could even do it. So I was going door-to-door, trying to talk to people. Social media right now is the best way to let everybody know, short notice. Councilor Reisner?
She must be going down the list. The others, I have concerns with the, well, the numbers and the, shoot. It's unfortunate that a lot of other communities are having to cancel events. And not only communities, but a lot of the farms are having to cancel, you know, their pay rides and mazes and things like that, that are, well, some of their bread and butter events leading into the winter. And I would feel terrible if, you know, if we had a lot of people get ill because of this. And like, Councilor Todd mentioned, you know, back when this was discussed in the summer, you know, we had no idea as to that it would be continuing now, and even, shoot, the way the numbers are, it's going to be into next year. So I, I would, I'm leaning towards not doing it, if that, you know, I guess is the bottom line.
Okay, Councilor Tracy?
I'm going to echo Councilor Reisner's sentiment, but part of my reason for doing that is if we had a population that paid attention to this pandemic in the ways that people do to try to avoid getting this virus, I'd be more interested in talking about alternatives and ways that we could do that. But that being the case, I don't, I too don't want to be responsible for infecting anybody or for having an event that might infect anybody, because quite frankly, there are plenty of people that don't believe this exists. And I just don't see that as being a risk that the city should take. I mean, that's just, I agree with you, Mayor. We haven't had any fun. I've got a fourteen-year-old son who's, you know, barely gets out of the house, and so I get it. And I'm just sorry that the count's going up like it is. But part of the reason it's going up like it is is because people won't take the precautions they should to avoid this virus. So, you know, it's a soft no for me, because I understand how important it is to you and to the community. I just don't think that our city should take the risk. Thank you.
Okay, Councilor Ripley. Oh, there you are.
I actually know three people with COVID right now, and one of them's not doing good. I won't support any of this stuff right now. I don't, I think we need to be a little safer or more cautious with our friends and family. And when you see somebody going through it, and their family can't go see them, and they're on a ventilator, that's not worth it. So I won't support any Halloween this year, just because we need to, we need to get control of the stuff that's going around and get people healthy.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Neese?
I go along with it as well, as much as I hate to see us not have it, and I have a concern, because we just found out that Oregon City has canceled theirs. So to me, that's going to make an increase of people, because I'm sure that some of their people will come into our community. And I'm just concerned about the health and well-being of others. So, and I just think we need to think about that for right now. And I think we'll be in trouble if we do this.
Okay, we do have someone that signed up to speak, Angela Riley.
Hi. As far as this Halloween event goes, I'm speaking about the planning portion of it. And I'd like to see a community-based group or something for inclusive event planning. Like our Halloween trunk-or-treat event, there needs to be some kind of protocol to prevent an individual or person from taking over what used to be our community event. Case in point, last year, when you gave away our Halloween festival to a single business who basically co-opted it as a vehicle to promote themselves. It would have been a grassroots community event, created by and for the people in the community, was turned into the bound-to-happen Halloween spooktacular. And those people who organized that, and was organized it the year before, when they came to the planning meeting, they were shocked to see that it was already planned and organized. You and the owners of that business had your posters and flyers already made without knowledge of those who thought they were there to organize it and plan it. The plans were showcasing the business, but it took place on the shoulders of the community volunteers who did the heavy lifting, set up tare drum, et cetera. And I, a lot of people felt it was an insult to the community and each business who'd been participating for years in that festival. So fast forward to this year, imagine being a business owner on Portland Avenue and seeing the mayor's post on social media announcing the event. Streets shut down, no parking, entertainments on the sidewalk, blocking entrances to their business. No prior knowledge, not. business, no prior knowledge, not being invited to be in any way a part of this planning of this event, being basically excluded from contributing, no input, no ability to say how it should be or what it should be. So that's not how community events are done. That's not, that wasn't a community event. That was basically you and someone else putting on something for everybody else and telling everyone how it's to be done. And that's not a community event. It's inclusive. That's what community is. Community events allow businesses and people to contribute and collaborate together to create the event we want to have. That's really an important point, is collaboration. That's what we need to do. So after two years of the Halloween thing being hijacked, we'd like to take it back. So maybe next year, we can have a community planning thing where the community gets to be a part of deciding how that's gonna be. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. So Jackie, do you need us to do just a consensus on Halloween then?
No, I think that we, we have that tonight. And I appreciate your, your honesty. If there was an exposure during this event, the city would be liable. And that's what our insurance provider has indicated to us. So I think the timing is good. You, you know, you guys are sincerely sorry about this. And I think what's best for the community is that we, we cancel the event for this year. I also know that we just completed our Gladstone Tours and Strategy. And one of the deliverables is to really embrace the Halloween in the community and the event planning. So maybe we can take it another look at that as we head into our strategic planning session for next year.
All right. Thank you. So then we move on to business from the audience. We have some people signed up. So Tammy, you wanna call them up? The first one is Riley Hartman. And I want to remind everybody that you have, that it's, the time limit is three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Riley Hartman. My pronouns are he/him/his. I am a Gladstone resident, period. I have listened to many of the city's public meetings and have read many op-ed pieces written by the mayor, members of council, and candidates for council. And I have been made aware that I am not welcome here. Apparently, having only four years served in Gladstone invalidates my opinions and any civic concerns I may have. More time accrued as a Gladstone resident to act as a qualifier of my opinion is exclusionary and rank benign. So I'll just say this, I've lived here long enough to know that this mayor, members of council, and some of the candidates for council have expressed more consternation over new families moving into town and where those families are from than you have the Proud Boy meetings hosted by Gladstone Restaurants, which I have to say, is a pretty sad legacy you guys have chosen for yourselves. Now with that said, I'd like to call into question the political intent and use of city funds by the mayor and this council, specifically the city funds that were used on attorney fees to look into the use of the Powwow tree logo by a candidate for council. I am referring to the October ninth article in the Clackamas Review titled "Controversy Dominates Gladstone City Council Racist." Madam Mayor, the following quote of yours appears in the article. "I believe the Powwow tree was essentially copyrighted as ours as soon as it was in use and remained so until we formally relinquished rights." Now, Madam Mayor, I imagine it would be pretty difficult to formally relinquish rights to something you never formally acquired, but I am not a lawyer. Though while I was a lawyer, at the cost of taxpayers needed to find this information, why is there a complete lack of oversight when it comes to frivolous spending? As counselors and as mayor, you must have had access to the trademarks and copyrights owned by the city. Why weren't cost-free internal methods used to find this information? The answer is a simple one. The mayor saw an opportunity to promote her political ally while at the same time intending to intimidate that ally's opponent through attempted legal action. Make no doubt that these actions were a weak attempt to influence the election through attempted intimidation of a candidate. This mayor would like nothing more than to cocoon herself in a like-minded city council. Madam Mayor, Counselor Reisner, your charge, elected officials, is to represent all of the citizens of Gladstone, not just those you've known for decades or those you seek to keep under your umbrella of influence.
Your three minutes are up. Thank you. The next is Ben Hildner.
Good evening. Complacency is a far more dangerous attitude than outrage. Seventy-seven days ago, seventy-seven days ago, this city hall held a community forum to hear about racism here in Gladstone, seventy-seven days ago. You have done nothing. Nothing to address racial violence. No statement, no comment, no reflection. Seventy-seven days and nothing has happened. So as others have pointed out, there are certain citizens of Gladstone whose needs are being met and others who are being completely ignored. Complacency is a far more dangerous attitude than outrage. And I, for one, am outraged. I am not going to wait for a Jonathan Price, a Rayshard Brooks, an Ahmaud Arbery, a George Floyd, a Breonna Taylor, an A. Toddigan of Jefferson, a Stefan Clark, a Botham John, Philando Castile, Alton Sterling, Tamira Rice, or Quanise Hayes in Gladstone. And your silence is complacency. I would prefer to see outrage. I would prefer a thousand times to see outrage. And I, for one, am outraged. Your silence is absolutely definite, particularly Mayor Stumpel.
Thank you. Next is Bill Osborne.
Howdy. Bill Osborne here. Want to address the darkness that seems to embrace election season here in Gladstone. There's a group of angry people who bully and lash out at anyone who doesn't agree with them. This group has also laid siege to social media platforms censoring and removing people and their comments by manipulation of automated algorithms, algorithms to further push their agenda. The same group now form what they call an anti-racism group. But for those that have seen behind the selective curtain, it's mostly hate speech bashing neighbors openly. This group has recently labeled, recently labeled myself, the mayor and Counselor Reisner as white supremacist due to asking a legal question. One of my opponents has used the Powwow tree, along with the color scheme for the city for her political campaign. I was asked about this during an interview with the Clackamas Review. What I said is that I was disappointed that someone would use this symbol to try to get elected. I stand behind that statement. This candidate, a recent Californian transplant with tribal ties on the East Coast. While I've been called a white supremacist, I am myself mixed race. I am not, nor have I ever been, white supremacist. My native ancestors are from this area and likely did gather at the Powwow tree. This is why I'm disappointed, because it dishonors my ancestors. This group of bullies have taken over so many of the social, social media platforms that has taken over, is headed by Counselor Tracy Todd and Counselor, Counselor Matt Tracy's girlfriend Candy Carlson. They and their friends have chased many people away from social media groups or led them to be afraid to comment on any post. This is just wrong. The same group tried to attack my character by posting lies about me and even posting my children's addresses and private information in order to attempt to intimidate me. But I'm still here. They posted my personal information address and phone number. They attacked me on such a personal level and then prayed into council meetings and tried to play the victim. I'm here to stand up for those who, who can't stand up or stand against these attacks or fear what will happen if they speak up. They are the reason people are afraid of speaking up in Gladstone. Despite any and all accusations about my motivation to stand up and run for office, those who know me know my intentions, intentions are to help the residents of Gladstone, because they need someone able to take the hits for them. I will continue to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Angela Riley.
Hi. Oh, that's hilarious. Bill Osborne, don't platter yourself. I don't think anybody cared enough about your address. And definitely, I've never seen your name or Neil spoken on the Anti-Racist page. Safe there. I want to talk about methods being used in Gladstone, and I'm specifically talking about dirty politics used by Tammy Stumpel and her gang, not even trying to conceal the fact that as a group, you're attempting to get a voting block in council. Specifically, these people are Mindy Garlandon, Neil Reisner, Greg Alexander, and Bill Osborne. No information is too small or petty to use to attack someone's character. As we've seen here, that is one of your favorite tactics. It doesn't matter how much time it takes, how much taxpayers' money they use, or how much wasted time is spent by city and state employees on their official complaints, hundreds, which have been dismissed, denied, and turned out to be invalid. The manipulation and the sneakiness going on right now is below the belt. Filing hundreds of frivolous and meaningless complaints with various committees across the whole state, which turn out to be nothing, that costs us our money. We're sick of it. We want people who aren't gonna behave this way and use these methods. Attacking a candidate for using an image of a non-copyrighted tree, for God's sake, wasting money on this vengeful whim, writing opinion pieces in the local paper full of lies and gaslighting to attack others. We don't want this anymore in Gladstone. It is particularly embarrassing for all of us, because you're dragging us all through the mud. We're done. At the bottom of all these lies, our mayor, Tammy Stumpel, is pretending that kindness matters as she creates fake profiles on social media and comments away. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Anessa Hartman.
Everyone, you know my name. My pronouns are she/her. I am here to address the outcome of the listening session, as Ben has already talked about. It has been seventy-seven days since the listening session. Other than the city administrator and the police chief attending a training and the potential for a DEI workshop for city employees and elected officials, the community has seen nothing in return, not even a thank you for sharing or reliving your traumas. I am not sure that you all, as leaders of the city, understand the importance of reassuring and showing all residents of your community that condemning violence and racism is important, or you just simply do not care about the minority's opinion. The optics of the situation is the latter. We sit here and watch other cities, counties, even school districts, understanding the importance of making a stance condemning white supremacy and racism. Yet here we are, seemingly kicking the can down the road. While it may not be important to you, it is not about you. It is about your community and you are supposed to represent and be empathetic towards everyone. And in my mind, when harm is done to even just one, there is harm done to all. So can the council please provide a clear and honest public statement as to what it has learned from the listening session, what the city is doing in regards to improving their education on racism and how to address it, what the city is doing to continue and enforce education on EDI in the workplace and its community? And last, will you create a resolution condemning racism directed at Black, African-Americans, and people of color? I look forward to receiving a response, hopefully before the next meeting. And to close my three minutes, I just wanted to take the opportunity to say thank you to Mayor Stumpel and Counselor Reisner for this free publicity that they have given me. Your articles have really reassured me as to why I am running, and that is to create a more inclusive and welcoming community for everyone. Because I have been studying past city council meetings so that I can catch up on current affairs, I would like to quote you, Madam Mayor, from a meeting on January ninth, 2018, that actually really inspired me to run. You said, "We are citizens, just like you, that felt that we needed to be up here to help move the city forward." And I couldn't agree with you more. Everyone's voice matters, no matter how long you have lived here or how much involvement you've had within this city. We must encourage and uplift representation from all walks of life, rather than be divisive and negative. And Bill, I, I want to offer my condolences to you that if the use of my honoring the Powwow tree was offensive to your indigenous heritage, as I know that I am a visitor on this land, if you were just to pick up the phone and call and explain your heritage and had an honest conversation with me, that would have been the proper thing to do. I really look forward to working with you all in the new year, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Les Poole. Is he on?
I do not see Les Poole on here.
Okay.
You need to unmute, please.
Hi. Kelly Monahan, I've lived in Gladstone for over five years. I too want to follow up on the July twenty-eighth listening session on racial justice. I've, I've heard nothing, I've seen nothing, I just feel like it's been swept under the rug and, and that's not right. It's still on my mind. I don't want it to go away, and I hope to have a city council member who will keep this issue alive and compel positive change. On the Powwow tree, controversy. It looks like two city council members, in tandem with a city council candidate, have accused his competitor for copyright infringement. They didn't do their homework before making the allegation in public and then spent taxpayer dollars on legal fees to find out they were wrong. But the accusation can't be unsaid, and some people are still gonna believe it, and I just don't think that's fair. I would like to know why it was necessary at all to make this accusation in public. I, I wonder what the motivation is, because I, I can't seem to come up with anything. How has it helped our city? Why are we spending city funds on what appears to be a, a political attack? I, I don't understand it. I think that there is no benefit to community. I think there's actually been some harm. This is bad publicity for our city. An article like this in the newspaper makes us look petty and nasty and backward. And if we want to revitalize our town and have a thriving revitalized town, we're gonna need to attract new families and new businesses and tourists. And I think that a newspaper article like this does not help that cause. Also, for a community to thrive, there needs to be willing civic participation by residents. This kind of backstabby stuff, it just drives people away. It disgusts people and they don't want to touch it with a ten-foot pole. So, you know, you know, why would anybody run for city council when they think they're gonna get raked over the coals? Why would anybody join a city commission if they feel unwelcome because they're a transplant or they have new ideas or different ideas? You know, if they think that things can never change, why, why would they bother even participating? So that's my opinion, and that's what I have to say, and I, I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Leslie Myers. Wasn't, she may not be here.
She indicated she may not be here, but wanted to ask the following, how many COVID-19 cases are in Gladstone and if council has considered adopting the county resolution condemning, condemning violence and racism against people? condemning violence and racism against people of color?
All right. Thank you. Last is Jerry Blankney.
I do not see a Jerry listed.
Okay. All right, so that's it with business from the audience. Next is business from council. So we'll start with Council Mercerow.
Good evening. I just want to applaud all of the city departments in their reports of the month. I wanted to applaud three, one director from the, why not, from the Public Works regarding the smoke tests that are going on. It hasn't been done, I believe, in all the years I've been involved and I appreciate those smoking tests. They're interesting. Also, I would like to approve and support Chief Schmierberger in that his endeavor to improve the police department and also the same for Chief Rick Huffman for improving in the fire department and their efforts from both regarding the evacuation and so on for the wildfires. That's all.
Thank you. Counselor Todd.
I just was going to give a little information on what's going on with the school district right now since I'm the liaison for them. They had some water damage at Cracksburger in September with all of the flooding, so that'll be updated tomorrow with the, when they have their regular meeting because it's sort of, it's hard since the meeting is the day after ours, so I'm usually on the old news with it. And so the financial and operations director will be talking about that and also they have made proclamation for the month of September 15th through October 15th for the school district to approve Hispanic and Latino Heritage Month. And so there's going to be sort of a lot of different things that they're going to be doing that, that's obviously passed at this point, but hopefully next year we won't be in COVID and there will be a lot more ways that that can be celebrated. So that's it.
Great, thank you very much. Counselor Reisner.
As already been mentioned, that next week, or next month is going to be the last meeting of the current Gladstone Library Advisory Board. And we're hoping that in, I would say, the near future, six, seven, eight years, we'll have a, we'll be getting our library back and it looks like, like I said, we'll talked about establishing an ad hoc committee, but I just want to commend all the current members and the past members over the years. Our library would not be what it is today, not talking about the building, but I'm talking about services and programs pre-COVID that our kids and, and I'm looking forward to future kids are going to be able to enjoy. Have a safe Halloween, even though we're not going to be downtown. Thank you.
Counselor Tracy.
Thank you, Mayor. First and foremost, I think it's going to be really important for me to thank the fire department and all our folks who work both in fire and police services. Give a shout out to the fire department first. You know, what a chain of events, right? And they did a spectacular job. I know that they were all over the region, they were providing support services for some of the firefighters up on the hill in both the Riverside and I believe even the Beach Creek Fire and I think the other fires, Callum Allen's fire. And then our police services too for backing them up and I just can't say enough. And talking to other folks around in other communities right now, I've been doing some work in Emergency Operations Center on dealing with some of the fire debris management. We've been talked about in high regard, Gladstone's always there. Both fire and police services, I know our police officers have been assisting in mutual aid. If I'm not mistaken, Chief, you can nod yes or no. Here recently, they've had a few really challenging, if I'm not mistaken, challenging calls to deal with. They do it with such high integrity and high regard, giving back to them from the other officers and the other agencies that they come out and assist, that I just want to, I want to say, you know, congratulations to them and kudos and just, you know, give them the recognition they deserve. I know that we had a, our last council meeting, I believe Tracy Todd texted me about some smoke and while they were fighting fires up on the hill, we were sending folks to a fire right here on our boundaries that could have gotten out of control very quickly and become an urban interactive fire. So can't say enough about that. Pivoting to Public Works, the smoke testing is a fascinating, fascinating exercise. I got a chance to witness it closely and of course, a lot of houses look like they're on fire. I'm glad that we got the message out. I don't know how many calls we got in C-Com for fires, but I understood that there was at least probably one or two. Lastly, and I'm very sorry about the Halloween celebration, but lastly, I'd like to, there's a lot of, there are a lot of citizens on the phone or on the meeting tonight. And one of the things I'd like to do is follow up one of the comments from one of our citizens about how, you know, I was called out or my significant other's called out. I think really when you're looking for the facts in a gaslighting kind of scenario, you just need to go to the facts and the facts are in the newspaper. All you need to do is Google my name or Ms. Carlson's name or a number of names, you're not going to find us in the newspaper writing articles about our own citizens that are negative and, you know, and denigrated. You just simply aren't. But our citizens who come to us and point fingers at us and tell us that we're the ones doing this are in fact, gaslighting us. They're trying to make sure that we accept the reality that's not there. So I'm, I'm very adamant about this. That's not the reality, citizen Osburn. We're not doing this, you are. So you probably ought to change your story because this isn't working anymore. I'm going to leave it at that. Everybody have a good night and thank you very much to the citizens that joined us tonight. I think you're now seeing the problems that we have here in Gladstone.
Hey, Tammy Bannock, is there any reason why I wasn't on the list to speak? My name is Tracy Hill. I emailed at 10:12 a.m.
I didn't have an email from you. I'm sorry, Tracy. I do not have that information. I will go back and look at our emails, but I do not have it, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Next is Counselor Ripley.
I have a couple, a couple of thoughts here. My first one is this election stuff and maybe I'll shoot a quick question to Jackie, if she's still there, I don't see her picture, that might be, might be my computer. Were all the candidates that are running for city council, were they given a list of rules and signs and how they can run their campaign? If Jackie's on, if you could answer that real fast, I'd appreciate that.
Yes, Counselor Ripley, when they all registered, the city recorder followed them with them in regards to municipal code and sign codes. And we've made sure that they've had the resources through the county elections website on what they can and can't do. They also received a copy of political activity on public employees. So yes, we have provided the information that we have to the candidates.
Counselor Ripley, do you have anything else?
Okay. Yes, the reason I bring that up is because when we have three candidates that have rules to say it only had two signs in the yard, but everywhere I go, three signs in yards and that's not, if you're running for council and you want to be a part of the city, it's not a good way to start off by breaking the rules of the election rules in town. That's, you're saying that you're, you're going to want to run for office to continue breaking rules. That's just, I don't know, I don't understand why you break rules when you're wanting to get into the position. So we need to take a look at some of our election rules and if they need to be revised, we need to revise them, if they need to be modified, what are we going to do if we adjust them so we can just have as many signs as we want? But if we're going to break rules, we don't want those people who are on for council. That's ridiculous. My other thing that I have is if the city council is going to write a letter in the newspaper, out of professional courtesy, you should let the other counselors know. When I get blindsided, people ask me, "Look, my crackhead wrote a letter because it didn't make any sense." And they're trying to figure out what's going on and assumptions and incorrect information given and I don't know, I hadn't read the article yet, so I don't know how I'm supposed to answer people in the public when I don't have proof there's an article out there. So we need better communication on council if we're going to send a newspaper, which I don't think that as counselors, we should probably be doing that. It should come from the whole council, not individuals, but we need to look at, have to increase, we need to improve our communication between counselors if we're going to be putting a letter in the paper and let everybody else know, expect for people to be freaking out. And we also need to take a look at our election stuff and wonder why candidates are breaking rules. That's all I got. But besides that, I have seen a couple of our city workers working around town, I chat with them every once in a while, they're doing a great job there, they clean storm drains, making sure there's no leaves over them, so when it rains, it goes down the storm drain. And whenever I see our city guys out there, they, they're doing a great job and I appreciate their work. I just, we just, we need to put more honesty and we, everybody likes to use this transparency word, but for some reason, the people that use that word a lot are the people who aren't being transparent. So we need to work on type people that we are and we're in the right position. That's all I got.
Thank you. Counselor Neese.
Yes, I want to, everybody has said something about pertaining to the fires and what has happened there and the relationships that they have worked with and, but I really want to say thank you to those that have all worked together. It's nice to have you.
Well, Linda, we can barely hear you.
Paying attention and listening. And I have been taking it very seriously with the things that's been coming out, trying to do my homework, get involved with a couple of other organizations and try to do as much training as possible because I don't understand some of the things that you've all gone through. I, yes, I'm probably privileged, but I appreciate the comments that you're making and drawing to attention because ladies and gentlemen, change is coming and we better start listening. And, and we have some great people on this call tonight that were courteous, professional, and I thank all of you for that. And I acknowledge you and, and I appreciate you coming forward and again, calling us out. We need to listen. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right, I think I got everybody. So I'm up. First, the food pantry numbers are increasing weekly and the story from some of these people that are reaching out are absolutely heartbreaking and makes me realize that this could happen to anybody. It's easy to forget that COVID is still there and it's impacting so many people. So my request for everyone here watching this, please don't become complacent as far as COVID goes. Help when you can and be compassionate. There's a lot of great organizations out there that are making a difference, like the regional food pantries and our new neighbors, Helping Neighbors program that's spearheaded by the police department. Those are just a few. So if you can carve out a little bit of time, please do so and volunteer because it, it's a win-win, honestly. The Clackamas County Coordinating Committee last month was canceled. We're going to be focusing on the State Transportation Investment Program, which is called STIP, and the State Transportation Investment Fund called STIF. Transportation is a super hot topic right now and all the future conversations are just going to have to wait to see what happens with the metro transportation bond next month. The Parks and Rec Board last night touched on the Gladstone Nature Park Master Plan. It's in the community outreach phase right now, so there's surveys out there. I took it, it's, it's very easy to do and they ask which plans you like, which concepts, which features you would like, and we would really like to have as much feedback as possible so that plan is reflective of what our community really wants. I don't know if we're going to do email blasts, but whatever we can do to get that survey in the most hands would be helpful. We discussed the Meldrum Bar parking fees. The consensus was $3 per day with the residents of Gladstone getting free passes. There's still some details to be worked out, like annual passes, but staff is going to come back to the Parks Board with a more formal plan. It looks like that will be rolled out probably the end of the first quarter of 2021 and the city's going to be using a firm to help market that change. COVID is still something we need to talk about, the numbers are increasing and we are nowhere near moving to phase two, as most of you know or should. We've been coupled with Washington County, Maltinoma County as far as moving forward. We are now meeting four of the six benchmarks, which is an improvement, but it's not good enough. The Clackamas County Board of County Commissioners is meeting with the governor to see if there's a way to relook at those benchmarks to make it a little bit more equitable because Clackamas County is way different than Maltinoma County and Washington County, we will never be the same. So there's going to be different impacts. So locally, wear your mask, socially and physically distance, if, stay at home if you have COVID symptoms and please be the example, don't put other people at risk. Let's see, some of our liaison positions, Matt or Linda, was there anything on businesses? I know we kind of covered the Halloween stuff, but anything else that you guys heard of that we need to address or be aware of?
No, and what, and the reason I didn't say anything about the businesses, because I have talked to some of them and what Angela Riley spoke about tonight was exactly the feedback that I got. And I figured after Angela spoke, there was no reason for me to address it.
Okay, thank you. Matt, anything?
Well, I will say that I think, kudos to the folks who are putting together the bar and grill there at Happy's. The building's changed significantly, it looks, it looks nice, so they're doing a good job. I haven't really been out, Mayor, to be honest with you, I'm distancing.
Okay, good. Senior center, Counselor Neese. We did talk about the IJ with Clackamas County and the food distribution program, is there anything else?
No, that, and that's, that was the last thing that, that I have heard that we had done and I know we talked about it, but I don't, I have not heard from Collins, so I don't know the outcome.
Okay. And traffic safety is Counselor Ripley, anything going on there?
Driving safety, as I, playing this email on this Zoom game, it's a little more difficult to have a good liaison to a committee when it's hard to see them.
Hello?
I believe we just lost him.
Okay. Library is Counselor Neese and Counselor Reisner, and I think we've already discussed that, unless anybody has anything else to add. No, we're good. Our favorite, Public Works Sewage and Water, that's Counselor Tracy and myself. Sewer, that's my piece of it and there isn't anything really going on. Christopher Baucher put something in the newsletter this time that kind of goes over the big issue that's coming up. It's not really something that we need to support, but something that we need to be aware of. Counselor Tracy, anything on the water side?
Yeah, so one quick thing, so for those of you who may know, we draw our water from the Clackamas County, or from the Clackamas River. With the fires being upriver, there were concerns that we needed to make sure we monitored water quality. Since there was no air attack or limited air attack on these fires, we didn't have retardants that would typically run off into the river or into the tributaries. So thus far, with water monitoring in place, we really haven't seen any problems. There's some, some turbidity, but nothing you would see with a major fire like this with a lot of retardant being laid on the fire. So right now, I think all the Clackamas water providers are feeling pretty okay about it. Nobody's texted me with any results that are negative, but I just want folks to know their water's safe at the moment.
Thank you for that, because actually I've had people ask that question. Planning Commission is Counselor Mercerow, anything, anything there? I think we covered a lot of planning committees. I think we covered a lot of planning commission stuff tonight.
Yeah, we did, and I just wanted to note, I didn't get involved in the discussion on those subjects because they were public hearings, and I was concerned that I wouldn't be able to vote if I had made too many comments. So I think the planning commission did a good job, and we basically all agreed tonight that they did that. As far as the police department and the fire department, I made some recognition to both the fire chief and the police chief, and they're doing a great job regarding improving their departments as well as helping out on things such as the wildfires.
Great, thank you for that. Counsel Reisner, you're back up on fire, please. Do you have anything?
Nothing more than what Counsel Mercero said, that they're doing a fantastic job, doing a lot of training in both individual and as, you know, as a whole.
Thank you. Counselor Todd already touched on the school district. Do you want to add anything else? You're muted.
Sorry, no, I'm falling asleep.
This is a long meeting for us, a very, very long.
It is, it's been a long day in general. So no, I, they have their meeting tomorrow, and I'll, you know, see if there's anything new.
Okay. Last thing I had is, I want to thank the emergency responders, community members and the staff who are absolutely incredible during these wildfires. We not only helped our own residents, but as some of you know, we hosted a significant number of evacuees all over town. We also supplied firefighters, as Counsel Tracy said, to Malala, Oregon City, unincorporated Clackamas County, Estacada. And our emergency operations team, I've said this before, but I'm going to say it again, they were incredible, sitting there with these guys that are so calm, when inside, I'm just ready to explode, because there's so much going on. I don't know how they keep it together, so many moving pieces. It was absolutely wonderful. When they signed on with Gladstone, I don't think they had any idea what 2020 was going to throw at them, so thanks for sticking with it. I hope the rest of the year remains calm for you guys, and that you get a break, and that's all I have. So will someone make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion was made by Counsel Tracy, seconded by Counsel Reisner to adjourn. Any further discussion? Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Ripley? Counselor Neese?
Yeah.
Counselor Tracy?
Aye.
Counselor Reisner?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yeah.
Counselor Mercero?
Aye.
Mayor Stimple?
Yes, our meeting is adjourned at 10:04 p.m. Thank you very much, everybody, for sticking with us. Long night.